Have to have surgery probably.
Capron?
Here.
Redkin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
We stand for a silent prayer and pledge allegiance and as you stand through silent prayer, let's try to remember the Frank Lemire family if you would.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michael Pritchard, can you be me the microphone? Where in the fall of nineteen twenty, a group of Sioux City World War I veterans meant to form a band as part of the newly created Monahan Post of the American Legion. And whereas the band became famous around the country in the early years by claiming its first-place rises in seven American Legion Band Competitions, including a competition in Paris, France in nineteen twenty-seven. Whereas the Monahan Post Band was legendary for its summer concerts in Grandview Park in Sioux City and under the direction of Leo Kaczynski, was instrumental in getting that band show built in the park and was dedicated in nineteen thirty-five. And whereas, starting in nineteen forty-eight, the Monahan Post Band became the Sioux City Municipal Band. And whereas the Sioux City Municipal Band now under, excuse me, baton of Director Michael Pritchard is still entertaining hundreds of people during its Sunday evening concert at the Grandview Park Band Show. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the Sioux City of Iowa on behalf of City Council, to hereby recognize the hundredth anniversary of the Sioux City Municipal Band and say thank you to all the talented musicians who have been part of the band over the years and do encourage all citizens to take advantage of these wonderful quality of life opportunities each Sunday night. Like to present that to you.
Well, it's my honor to direct the band. This is my fourth summer doing so and it's got a long tradition and every year our crowds have gotten better and the musicians we have are very talented and I can't say enough how important the support from the community is and our support from the city for funding the band and allowing us to do all the great things we do with paying musicians and soloists and purchasing new music every year. And we have great people in the band and a great staff at the Parks and Rec Department that help us all out and I'm very honored to be the director and it's something that I love to do. And I'm also very thankful to be back in the area now. So it's a much easier drive for me to direct the band every summer. So, thank you very much and yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, could I say one thing, please? I'd like to say one. You talked about a long tradition. We're very fortunate in this community to have Director Pritchard on board with this. Sunday night, they read your resume, or maybe it was the Sunday before, and what a great resume you have. That's really impressive. And I know Dan Dykstra is in the audience and there are probably others that are regular attendees of the Sunday night concert. So, and it's just, it really is, it's a wonderful evening. You do a great job, so please keep up the good work.
Thank you.
No doubt.
Kristi Patine? You, Kristi. We have a commendation that says, whereas you are to be commended for taking the time, the initiative and the effort to create a beautiful business property that contributes greatly to the city of Sioux City, you should be proud of the work you've done and the beauty you have created.
Sunday night, they read your resume, or maybe it was the Sunday before, and what a great resume you have. That's really impressive. And I know Dan Dykstra is in the audience and probably others that are regular attendees of the Sunday night concert. So, and it's just, it really is, it's a wonderful evening. You do a great job, so please keep up the good work.
Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa. Kristi Patine? To hereby commend the Ronald McDonald House for exhibiting pride.
You, Kristi.
Of Sioux City and being named the recipient.
We have a commendation that says, whereas you are to be commended for taking the time, the initiative and the effort to create a beautiful business property that contributes greatly to the city of Sioux City.
Thank you.
You should be proud of the work you've done and the beauty you have created.
Thank you so much. This means a lot to us.
Sunday night, they read your resume, or maybe it was the Sunday before.
We were very fortunate to receive a generous donation from a woman named Dolores Tarr. And because of that, we were able to change the front of our landscaping to look a lot different. Update that. The class group helped us with that. We're very fortunate to have a lot of help from community points and volunteers to keep it beautiful. We really appreciate that and this really means a lot, so thank you. It's a beautiful space for the families that we serve at the Ronald McDonald House and that's exactly what we were going for, is a tranquil, beautiful space for them to relax in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we all set up now to go?
I think so. You've got to fix that problem.
I'm going to move the consent agenda, which is items two through thirteen E. You can consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. Anyone wishing to speak on item today or not on the agenda, just want to speak under Citizen Concerns, remember to state your name and address for the record, please. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Two is the reading of the City Council minutes of June tenth, two thousand nineteen. Three is a presentation and motion accepting the Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan.
Gentlemen.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Kelly Bach, Parks Maintenance Field Supervisor. This is a plan that we've put together. It's culmination of several years of things and conversations that we've had, both council and outside and some private entities. So, if we can pull it up.
Good luck today.
Yeah, we're, we're going to get there. It's been sticking for a while. Give me just a minute.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Kelly Bach, Parks Maintenance Field Supervisor.
That's fun.
This is a plan that we've put together. It's culmination of several years of things and conversations that we've had, both council and outside and some private entities. There we go. We are. All right, Emerald Ash Borer Management. Emerald Ash Borer, it's an invasive beetle that kills ash trees. We've talked about this previously. They're found in leaves of trees, adults do. The larvae can be found in the living tissue of the tree. They tunnel into that living tissue, disrupting the flow of nutrients, starving the tree. It has the potential to kill all of the native ash trees in Iowa. Some pictures, quick, if you want to identify what it is. We'll keep moving along. How you can tell if your tree has an infestation? Get lots of calls about, my tree has EAB and you'll show up in a maple tree or other ones or non-symptomatic like the, unlike these symptoms here. See, the first one is witch's broom, common, starts basil sprouts. The tops of the trees die, D-shaped holes and the S-shaped gallery. Those are just some quick, how you can identify. Ash mortality, when you look at EAB, your infestation can survive fairly low for the first three to five years. You won't see it and then your death curve increases greatly, which each year the mortality increases quickly. That's if you do absolutely nothing at that point and just leave it be. So we're going to run over some different portions of this project and each of these we'll touch on. So the management of the trees, the different approaches, making a decision to remove or retreat, ordinance regulations, reuse options for remove trees, replacement of the trees and then our public education. Management of EAB, there's four approaches that we're looking at that could be implemented in the management of EAB. The first being do nothing, wait for the trees to die and remove them. The management of this process is simple. When it's dead, you remove it, but it does create a large workload and cost expenditure in a very short time. As you see that death curve, suddenly you're looking at a massive amount of trees to remove. Remove and replace, remove all ash trees prior to EAB being identified and replace them with a different species. It spreads out the workload and financial impact over time, but your tree canopy declines rapidly until the new trees mature. We are at about twenty-eight percent ash in, within our city as best we can tell.
Kelly, after the trees died, do they move on to another tree or how does that work? I mean?
That would be part of the process. They generally look for weakened, sick trees to attack first. As long as there's trees in the area, we'll probably touch on that a little bit. Host tree, they'll kind of stay in that area and feed until that point where they have to move on. That kind of comes into the containment part of it a little bit and we'll touch on that in a few minutes. And the last one is sustained treatments. Chemically treat the ash trees to kill the EAB. It is effective in controlling EAB and protecting the ash trees, but it is fairly costly.
Wouldn't you say that how costly is it?
Um, let me. I can get you a closer cost, Bob.
And how effective?
Chemical treatment, twenty-four inch tree would cost between forty-one and eighty-two annually just for chemical. That's not somebody to do the work.
Right, but to tape one down and replace it's going to cost you.
And the thing with treating, it's the lifetime. So, you can't just, okay, we're going to do it for two years. There is some not published research, but the treatment can last up to three years. You'll have a little bit of resurgence of EAB in that tree, but it will be effective for a three year. So, depending on what chemicals you use, you can get up to three years of containment.
Well, once the Emerald Borer, they've been going across America, once they leave your town, they don't come back, do they?
Well, it could be like D- eight, I've got to quit using acronyms, Dutch Elm Disease, where we saw that resurgence back. So there may be some trees that are treated if they stop treating them after it leafed or the ones, there may be some that are hardy enough to survive the initial, come through, then you'll catch those on a second round if it's imported from somewhere else. And then there's the combination approach. Staff would recommend the combination approach following action plan. In wooded, unmoated areas, let the natural life cycle be the process. When it dies, it falls down, returns to nature. Think of Bacon Creek, the wooded areas, except where there's trails and things like that for the safety factor, then we take care of that process. Right now, continue to evaluate and remove lesser ash trees based on their health and location. When EAB is identified, remove the majority of the ash trees in a defined parameter to slow the spread. Some ash trees would be left as hosts to keep the EAB from spreading outside of the parameter too quickly. Replace the ash, removed ash trees with a diversity of tree species. So that would answer the question of would we take everything? How do we contain it? We leave, once they're identified in an area, leave enough food for them to stay there and then try to contain those areas as best as we can. They will move up to one to two miles, so they will move around, but we can slow it a little bit by leaving a food source for them in that area. And then the last would be tree ash trees that are healthy and have additional value due to their location. Allow the homeowners to treat the right-of-way trees that meet the same criteria. It's an ongoing process that needs to be done every two to three years to be effective. Treatment can also lessen the amount of removals needed yearly, spreading the workload and financial impact to the city. So you could treat trees that will be eventually removed, but you wouldn't have the workload of removals as heavily each year. You could spread that out.
And it would address the canopy issue that you were talking about.
Correct. You know, if you have ten trees in a block, leave three, treat them, you know, just as a...
Let the other ones mature a little bit.
So here's a decision plan. You know, start at the top. Do you want to save the tree? Some of this is geared towards the homeowners. Yes, I do. Is the tree in good health? What's the value to the property environment? What's the value to the owner of the landscape? Then you can treat the tree. Any tree over twenty inches diameter at chest height needs a professional to do it. You can't do it yourself.
A professional to administer every time?
Yes. If you don't want to save your tree, remove the tree. Untreated trees die as EAB is a hundred percent fatal. Live trees are also less expensive to remove and clean up. Dead trees don't allow for people to climb just because they're very brittle and they shatter a lot when they come down, so there's a lot more to clean up. It's a more difficult process to remove. And then the last one is a very good one. Hiring a tree care professional. Get two estimates. Ask for references and certifications, ask for proof of insurance or bonds, and then you can always team up your neighbors to seek volume discounts. We see this quite often as every time there's an article published about Emerald Ash Borer, some different individuals come in and tend to excite the citizens and take advantage of that. So definitely get written estimates, find out who they are, careful where you're giving your money. Ordinances and policies. Currently, it is seventeen four point eighty puts the Parkway Maintenance Trees to the homeowner's responsibility. It addresses that. Eight point five six point zero seven abatement of nuisances. We would say that we need to revise that to include the Emerald Ash Borer. So we'll be bringing that one forward, adding EAB to the Dutch Elm Disease. Also, in the Parkway Maintenance, we do have a CIP to address some of these things. Additional help managing the whole program and we'll get into that a little later also. Ordinances and policies, contractors for removal and treatment. Staff recommends educating the public on how to select a tree care professional rather than the regulation.
That B is not good enough. If I want to put a building addition on, that contractor has to have a bond and permit with the city. And I think you ought to require that because we're going to get, once this thing hits, we're going to get flooded with the most unscrupulous people you can imagine in this country. You're not going to require them to register. Then they're going to, not all of them, but the ones that will, they're going to take advantage of local citizens. And, you know, Darrell, you see it when a storm comes through here. And I think you've got to somehow figure out a way to make them register with the city and if you catch them, the fine ought to be substantial. And they also ought to have to have a bond on file because they're not, if they don't treat that tree like they're supposed to and it dies, the recourse ought to be they get to pay to take it out through their bond.
What I wor-
Oh, again, but...
What I worry about as well, Kelly, is I'm anything but an arborist, so it's like being able to identify is A, an ash, or B, is it infected, or C, you know, with the likelihood? All of those questions where if someone that said they were a professional came out to my house and said, oh yeah, that's an ash and you need to get it out of here or you need to do this, I don't know what I could really do to argue, you know, that point. So I think to the mayors, I think we definitely want to be attentive to those on the front end or really pay attention to that on the front end.
This was, you know, a work in progress and-
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I agree. But I guess I'm worried about people taking advantage. I mean, I can see, I can see some of these guys coming to town and saying a silver maple's an ash tree and I wouldn't know the difference. Others have silver maples in my yard, but they're a weed too, but I wouldn't know the, I don't know what a tree looks like.
And so I think that's part of your education. You're talking about educating the public and making them known. I mean, how to identify what the leaf looks like, what the bark structure looks like? I mean-
Okay. That's not a problem. We can add that in. If it's just as simple as a list of whatever we require, if we require a bond and a license, that we have a list and that's posted on our education.
Yeah.
You want to be on that list, here's the parameters and there you go.
And the thing is too, is they're going to be doing more than one tree. I mean, if they're going to be a contractor and do it the right way, they'll have some good work, you know, so they need to be on top of it. And there shouldn't be a problem because if they're a good contractor, they'll agree with it.
Then we can go into the treatment or kinds. With chemicals, they're already licensed from the DNR, but we can also add this into contractors for the removals, ones that are licensed and bonded to do the administration of it. The DNR will monitor the restricted use pesticides. They're required to submit records when asked by the DNR. So we'll do the same thing if that's agreeable as the removal portion of that. The last portion would be disposal of the ash trees. Staff would recommend that any ash tree removed in the city limits, be disposed of in a city designated area. It would help limit the movement of Emerald Ash Borer through centralized location and the prompt disposal at that point. So hopefully we can stop the movement a little bit. This time of the year is basically when EAB starts emerging. So you don't want people moving it all around town. Hey, it's a great tree, but don't take it up into Plymouth County to your friends for firewood. They don't want our problem here and we wouldn't want theirs, so.
Mentioned the tree service people should understand that too, and so maybe something should be-
That's where it would be.
Plan for disposal or something.
Yeah, we'd have to.
How do they move?
Light.
So if you cut a tree down, you put it on a trailer, they could come out and fly?
If they emerge, they can fly out, yeah. So, reuses. We've looked at several different things. Biomass for heating and fuel substitute. It is market-driven. It's dependent on the cost of other fuels. And if you're looking at using it as for heating for your own buildings, you have a fairly substantial equipment investment at first, but, you know, you can offset some of that with your heating savings. It could be an amendment for wastewater byproducts. We've talked a little bit about that internally. Lumber, we've talked with the school board, not the school board, but O and M about a cooperative program that could take these logs from raw material and be made into a marketable product like you see here. Benches, things like that. So it may be very small scale, but it'll be a teachable thing. You know, kids can go from here's the log to here's where I marketed it and sold it. So it may be something we can work together with schools and work on a small program, pilot program with that.
Say, how have you felt about, I mean, have you put some feelers out about this, Kelly? I mean, kind of looking into that, like what it would, what on the front end this would cost, whether it was a city building or otherwise, you know, if that makes sense to do that or repurpose it? I literally just read an article this weekend in a magazine that was talking about a custom furniture maker that did the same thing. He said, I used every toothpick of ash because he was making this beautiful custom furniture. So I just didn't know if there was a mill or anywhere where we could be really capitalizing on this.
There isn't any large-scale mills. Most of the lumber pellets, that could be a reuse, but most of them for cotton.
Most of them what?
For cotton. One that would take thing, just to bring them to get a little bit of payment back for our log.
Soft wood? I mean, can you build them?
Ash is hard, very hardwood. It's good finding that right market for it. And once EAB hits the area, then you're flooded with-
Yeah.
Having overabundance, so.
Well, and then you'd, yeah, I mean, whether you mill it or chip it, I mean, I think I even talked with Matt, maybe you, Kelly, about chips for parks, you know what I mean? If we turn it into mulch for different areas or if there was a need for a trail system, you know, down the road. I just want us to be thinking about the reuse of that. But I agree, you almost have to have that plan or if it's a fuel, heating system, you have to have that in place so that when it does and you have thousands of logs, you know what I mean?
And, you know... Work and it takes a willingness to maintain a system that isn't as easy to work on as a natural gas, you know, where it comes in and you're done.
Yeah.
So, but there's some offsets and benefits to that. We do have some prices on smaller systems, how many square feet they have those, but so if you're interested, I'd send them to you.
I, well, you'd be the expert. I would trust your opinion, you know what I mean? But I think, yeah, that was something I would want to see and what that initial cost is, kind of what the mayor's talking about as far as treatment, what's that going to cost long-term versus the combination versus, okay, if we wanted to heat CMG, what does that look like? You know, if there's one property that's like, well, no, we can really actually use that and stockpile a lot of the logs and will last for ten years, you know, then is that initial investment worth it?
The only problem is we'd have to chip it or de-bark it all before, because if you leave it with the bark on, that's where the EAB lives. So you're just stockpiling the pot, concentrating the problem in one area at that point.
Yeah.
So you have to do fairly rapid disposal or to the point where you can hold it and dispose of the outer layer in the bark. So, but it's not-
It's labor intensive as well as what you're saying?
It's not overcome, not, it's, can be overcome, but it's just something we need to think about. And then we, public property, tree replacement on public and private. As far as city facilities and parks, we would use our operating CIP and grant funds such as Trees Please to replace the trees that have been removed on those properties. And now we get into a kind of fun part. Private property, residences and right-ofways. We have been working on a project. It is called Sioux City Community Trees. Staff has been working with citizens to get the project established. This project would be privately funded, but administration would be through the park staff. The project could be designed such as upon verification of the removal of an ash tree, the resident will receive a form from park staff that would have a vendor and a species list on it. The form would allow for fifty percent cost share up to a set amount when bought from a selected vendor from an approved species list. The form would act as a voucher for the vendor who would submit them back to us and invoice us monthly for reimbursement for the project. Kind of depending on the funding level, the project would provide funding for one tree cost share per residence per year. As more funding would be available through grants and private donations, it could be expanded and the program could possibly expand to the level of the IDNR tree distribution. So it depends on our level of funding and where we're at. But we do have a commitment right now to kind of get this project off the ground, so.
Kelly, would that help you too? I'm trying to recall, we talked about this a long time ago, but would this help you too, tracking the location of the trees? Because wasn't that a concern as well as kind of an updated of where certain trees are, at least if you're, if you do the voucher system, does that help you with some of that too?
That would be just more verification that a city staff member came out, yes, Alex, we took a tree off your prop. You can go to whatever vendor you would like off of this list so we can kind of control it and what species are going back in so we don't get a monoculture like we've had.
Yeah.
At that point, so.
Bullet from up here.
Okay, there we go.
So, here with us.
So public education, our last point. The public could be informed through EAB, creation of webpage that would contain information on what it is. What is EAB? How do you identify? What do you do if it does have EAB? How to select your tree care professional? How to select and plant a tree? And how to plant the tree correctly and safely? And the financial and health benefits of the trees? And that is it. Questions?
You planning public hearings? For, are you planning for public hearings to share the information with the public in general or?
We haven't created that page yet. We used to have kind of a general page. We had Trees for Sioux Land, which was kind of a branch out of Community Enhancement, out of the Chamber, that has gone- that has gone away, but we do have now this new project. And Rosie and Dan have been instrumental on the private side of this. Coming basically up with the idea and continually giving me that little prod.
Yes.
Rosie, Rosie can do that.
I'm trying.
Yeah.
In many different areas. In fact, at the Art Center on Wednesday, they kind of called me for it. But that's okay, because when we see things that need to be done, somebody has to say something about it. I would commend Kelly for keeping the cemeteries looking presentable, which takes time from the tree project. For keeping flooded areas as well kept as they could be, which also took time from this project. For hoping and praying for somebody who will assist him in this job, because he clearly can't do this by himself. And we do need some of the funding from those promised, oh, I love this million dollar stuff. From those millions that you promised for five years and would continue till the project is finished. I think that what we need now is public awareness and public concern. Because without those, this tree project is dead before it starts. I shouldn't be saying dead right. What we really need now is public information campaign. A second person or so who's going to stay on staff and help with this, because it doesn't happen magically. And I don't know what else sensibly to say.
Need your name and address for the record.
All right, Rosie Cuny, 1766 Aztec Circle, Sioux City, Iowa.
Thank you.
Height and weight needed?
Blood type, everything.
All right, or date of birth. I just had 85 and it was good.
Yeah, happy belated.
All right, Dan?
Dan Dykstra, 2515 McDonald Street. I am Rosie's administrative assistant. And driver and so forth. We do appreciate all the work that Parks and Rec have done and they've done a really good job. I understand the questions regarding costs. We did a lot of research with Iowa State to try to figure out some of the science of all of this. And it's pretty clear that there's no perfect solution to go spray a tree or put it in the bark, put it in the ground. There's some possibilities, but I think long range, we need to pretty much be looking at replacement and just trying to get ahead of the ball. So I really appreciate the willingness to put this in place, get some funding behind it. And as Rosie said, once the public kind of understands what's going on, they'll figure out what the ash tree is. And, you know, there's good pictures and stuff. You can figure that out and say, oh, this is pretty healthy. I'll leave this alone for a little bit anyway. Or hey, maybe I should be proactive and get it down. But it is, it is expensive to remove a tree. It really is. So we really want to work with neighborhoods and neighbors to be able to do it collectively to try to reduce that cost. Because there's no question about it. And I appreciate the comment about people being bonded or licensed. I've gotten several calls about people who replaced roofs that are falling apart now that, you know, happened a year and a half ago. So, I mean, that kind of thing does, does happen. So again, thank you so much.
And I think if you've gotten those calls, we don't have an ordinance on those guys, which we're supposed to be working on, that you eat, no matter, any roof should have to have a permit and any roof should have to have a bonded contractor. Otherwise, you get exactly what your clients are complaining about. We're about the only city around here that storm chasers can come in and they can leave. And when, and as a result, our citizens suffer because of that. So I'm, I, that's why I'm very aware of the problems that people from out of town can cause if we just allow some sort of registration process. Because it's totally unfair to the citizens. And it's totally unfair when they say they're treating a tree and maybe don't and it dies. And the homeowner is still going to be stuck with that. And it ought to fall back on that person's bond that supposedly treated the tree to save it, so.
This is a long-term project. To say it's five years is even short sighted. It's really a 10-year project at least. And better to do it in increments and address it than, you know, be increasing prices in seven years, yeah.
Well, we appreciate you guys staying with the process too. And we'll be working with Kelly to figure out where the resource is, not the financial necessarily, but the manpower issues that we're going to be facing, so.
The other thing that we didn't talk about yet was maintenance. And that's quite as important as planting, because otherwise we will lose more than 50% of what we put in. And so.
Even with a good man like Kelly helping plant the trees at my church, I saw we lost a couple of those that we planted last year. And obviously, we did everything that we could, but you just lose, I mean, those young trees, there's no guarantee they're going to grow, so.
I replaced three green ash. And what I got was three maples in their place. Two of them have about half percent of what they should have had on them and are already being replaced. And that's with care.
Right.
And.
Yep.
Certificates and all that stuff, so.
Well, thank you for your time and efforts too. Anyone else to be heard?
Kelly, how far out are the ash core? How close are they to here?
Sioux Falls and Alta, so 90, 90 miles. So the reality is, it's close.
Yeah, by the time we get everything in place. I guess I'd like, I mean, we'll accept this, I'm sure, but I'd like a game plan of, I, I have to agree with Rosie, I don't think we can stretch you any thinner. So we need to figure out what we're going to do there and get a game plan now rather than wait till they get it here. I think we need to be proactive.
CIP does address the additional help. It's just finding a person suitable.
Right.
That can.
But I don't want to wait, realize the CIP kicks into next week or two weeks. I want to make sure we're doing that rather than wait until the end of that CIP before we hire anybody, so. Okay?
And also, Bob, an ordinance that you were talking about, that should be here sooner than later.
She'll work on that when she's working on that out of town roof deal that we've talked about.
I've made some.
Okay, all right. Four is a resolution amending.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you. Four is a resolution amending the centralized purchasing procedure by adding FEMA procurement policies. Five is a resolution recertifying Habitat for Humanity as a community housing development organization. I need to abstain on that. Six is a resolution authorizing a grant application to IDOT for funding to develop a plan for rail development in the Southridge Business Park. Seven are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving an energy service agreement with West Plains for the City Hall Variable Airboat Project. B is a resolution approving a contract to Johnson Controls for the Tyson Automation System Upgrades Project. C is a resolution authorizing a funding agreement with Habitat for Humanity for a single-family dwelling at 1816 Harkin Place. I need to abstain on that. D is a resolution authorizing a prairie partner cost sharing agreement with DNR to establish a wildlife habitat in Sioux City Coles addition. E is a resolution authorizing a partners for fish and wildlife landowner agreement with the Fish and Wildlife Services and DNR to establish a wildlife habitat in Sioux City Coles addition.
Matt, I had a quick question just about this. I think it's quick. Do we need to put and surround that property or anything? I understand it's a pretty natural habitat just for butterflies and things like that, but is that something? Do we need to have a fence around because it's fairly residential?
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. It's just an open space right now. I'd recommend to keep it as it is and it's just one less area that we're having to mow. Yep, and Kelly's done a good job of identifying those areas. And this is one area he identified and we want to continue to utilize these programs for future areas to cut down maintenance and mowing.
Okay, I just didn't know if a fence would be beneficial to keep people or animals or dogs or anything out, but.
I think the.
You're not worried, I'm not worried.
The large tall prairie will hopefully keep people out.
Deter people.
F is a resolution approving amendment number one to the Consulting Services Agreement with HGM for Bridge Repairs and 46th Street Bridge Overlay Project. G is a resolution approving a contract to Mark Albanyshus for the Division Street Paving Project. H is a resolution approving a contract for transportation service with South Sioux City. I is a resolution approving First Amendment to Development and Minimum Assessment Agreements with Eagle Ridge for development at 1511 Old Highway 141. J is a resolution approving a minimum assessment agreement with PLM Rentals for a portion of Lot 73 of Eagle Ridge Edition. Eight are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution authorizing payment to McGinnis Roofing and Sheet Metal for the hail damage in building, roofs and building project. B is a resolution authorizing payment to Bainbridge Construction for the Wesley Way Sidewalk Project. C is a resolution authorizing, approving a settlement of workman's comp claim and authorizing payment. Nine are appointments to boards, commissions and committees. A is a motion appointing Dick Pruitt to the Event Facilities and Term Advisory Board for a three-year, for a partial three-year term replacing Tim Seaman. B is a motion appointing Kathy Pfaffel to the Transportation Advisory Board. City Council waives the policy that no person shall serve on more than one commission. Ten are purchasing, A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Thompson Innovation for three AC variable frequency drives for the Riverside Collector Well. I need to abstain on that, please. B is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Thompson Innovation for installation of the AC variable frequency drive. I need to abstain. Eleven are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. See the list, come forward. Twelve are applications for beer and liquor licenses. See the list, come forward, do you have any questions? Thirteen are receipt amendments. See the list, come forward, do you have any question? Anyone to be heard on any of those items, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll vote. Passes five zero. Fourteen is a hearing and ordinance adopting a site plan at 4301 Singing Hills Boulevard. The petitioners, U.S. Cellular, P&amp;Z recommends approval deferred from June 10, 2019. I'll move that. The public hearing is now open. Please come forward and if you have any comments.
Yep, Michelle Bossnellis, Chair Planning and Zoning Commission. This did, this item did come before us and we made a positive recommendation to the council for it. Just, I guess, to let you know, there was a discussion about basically how many towers should or could be located on one property. Right now, you know, there, it isn't necessarily in there as a code, but, you know, something that maybe we want to consider and look at. But they, we did feel that this was an appropriate site plan approval and did make the recommendation.
Anyone to be heard?
My name is Scott Spence. Address is 3311 109th Street, Urban Dale, Iowa. I am here representing USC OC of Greater Iowa, U.S. Cellular. And just want to reiterate that U.S. Cellular is excited to be a part of the Sioux City market. We're making a substantial, or U.S. Cellular is making a substantial investment in the Sioux City area and surrounding areas to increase coverage. We appreciate the time of, of planning and zoning to, to review the site plan. And we appreciate the approval of that or the recommendation for approval of that as well. And I hope that you'll do the same. Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? The hearing is now closed.
Here, I'm going to abstain on this for conflict.
Passes four zero to one. Is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? No, I'll move that.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
I'm staying.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Apron?
Aye.
Second, third. Passes four to zero to one. Fifteen is an ordinance rezoning 4204 Military Road. The petitioners, Rod Buckholz, P&amp;Z recommends approval. First consideration approved June 10, 2019. I'll move that.
Second.
Anyone to be, this, this is not a hearing? Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Passes five zero. Anybody opposed to waiving statutory rule?
No.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott? Waters?
Aye.
Apron? Gretkin?
Aye.
Heard reading? Passes five zero. Sixteen is an ordinance amending municipal code to increase the rate charges for daily, monthly and bulk parking in the municipal parking ramps and increased overtime parking fines. The others can move that one.
I'll move it.
Your second?
I'll second it.
Good afternoon, Council, Dave Carney, Public Works Director. We're here to talk, or we have RCA in front of you for amending parking rates. This is looking at the financial part of it to make sure that the parking funds stay solvent. I mean, currently, right now, we already put in 50,000 into our operating fund from the general fund and 75,000 from our TIF funds for our CIPs. And not that that would necessarily go away, but over, I think by 2022, we would fall below finances guideline of a 20% balance. And by 2024, the fund would be negative if we don't do something with parking rates.
TIF's not going to.
No, no, the TIF input, I didn't say was, that's why I said it would not go away. But even with that, slowly but surely, our fund will go below the 20% that they try to keep. And then by 2024, the fund would.
We have a couple of items that are major capital. Currently there at Heritage Ramp, there was a spalling problem. That's about a $400,000 repair. Plus, we have to start replacing meterheads. So we are going to start looking at major capital repairs and replacement. So this was the first attempt at starting to fund some. Obviously, we leave it up to you how you want to proceed on this. But with CIP coming up, would probably be reshuffling our CIP if you were not to approve this today.
What's it, it's going from 60 cents to 80 cents?
Those are for 30-minute meters and. I was trying to think of where the 30-minute meters are.
30 is 60 to 80 cents.
For 30-minute meters, and that's only for 30 minutes. And then all the rest of our meters would be 75 cents to a dollar.
Per hour?
Per hour.
We are not raising the Martin Luther King ramp price. We are just raising the other ones up to that level. And then we are also excluding out the group rate of over 300 parkers because we don't have anybody in the.
Yeah, the largest group we have is 201 parkers. So we barely have one group that meets the 200 parking, parker ratio.
Anyone else from, anyone from the audience want to be heard?
Dick Salem, 700 Pierce Street. I don't know, I just came in a little late. I was really tied up. But I don't know, did Donna talk to you about what the Effective Fiscal Committee?
Not yet.
Pardon me?
Not yet.
Well, we, the Effective Fiscal Committee of the city, we met this last week. And Donna mentioned a program that we thought should be implemented here. And that would kind of override what you're doing here. And that was, it was voted unanimously that we recommend that you develop a program similar, is it to Davenport?
Davenport, yes.
Similar to Davenport or the same thing that has a free two-hour parking in the downtown area. And then if you exceed that, then it's a $25 charge. That would eliminate, that would really benefit the retailers and offices downtown because there's very few times when it's, when it's more than two hours. And that, and that's only if you're working there. And if you're working there, you shouldn't be parked in the parking meters anyway. So it would really, it'd be a win-win situation for everybody. And I know the $25 would be a. dollars would be a definite detriment to nearly going longer than two hours. So I just, we felt that that was a really good program, and the motion was made and passed unanimously to recommend that to the city council.
To get rid of the meters entirely, Dick?
Pardon me?
To get rid of the meters entirely, right?
Yes, so you wouldn't really need parking meters. You wouldn't need to spend eight-hundred thousand dollars on parking meters, and you wouldn't have to have as much, you know, for the parking enforcement, and it would pretty much take care of themselves. Now, Donna mentioned, and she can tell you what the process is, and maybe you can too, about how that's monitored and how they determine whether it's two hours or more, and I don't exactly remember.
They use license plate recognition, so they have what they call parking ambassadors that, and that's the thing, you have to keep it consistent. You have to come up with one timeframe because they, you have to have a loop where they're coming back through, and like they told me when I talked to them is that they're very stringent on enforcement. So they're coming around every two hours, and you can't park within so many blocks of where your car was, so it's not like.
You have to be out of there.
Yeah.
For an hour time period.
Yeah, no, it's like, it's, yeah, it's two hours is what they use, and if you go any more than four hours, you've got to remember, a two-hour, if I park there right after the parking attendant goes by, I'm really safe for four hours. So if you do something, because someone recommended, well, maybe we could do four, but that would be way too long, and I think you'd get a lot of employees parking in there and just moving a couple of blocks.
No, I was saying, I thought that it said in the Davenport example, and I could totally be wrong. I thought it was saying that you could park there for two hours, but then when you had to leave, you had to exit that vicinity.
For six hours.
Oh, four, I thought it was four.
Yeah, for six hours, you have to be, you can't come back to that same area.
Well, and you, as far as enforcement, you would have to make that loop more often because if you get someone that parks there five minutes after the meter attendant has been there, and she doesn't come back for another two hours, that person could basically take up a stall for four hours almost.
But I mean, it's, I mean, it has its merits. I mean, we would cut down on repair costs. Obviously, we wouldn't have the replacement costs, but we would, there would be a general, from what the person at Davenport says, they believe that he didn't have the numbers in front, that it was a general decrease in what the revenues were, but the twenty-five-dollar ticket is definitely a.
How would you pay for parking ramps then?
Well, that's the thing. Right now, I mean, if you look at our on-street parking, does somewhat supplement a little bit of our parking ramp cost. That would be, that'd be one of the drawbacks.
So we're going to pay for it either way?
Yeah, it's a little bit, but you're going to, you're going to spend eight-hundred-thousand dollars on meters, and we never, we never factor that in as a cost.
Yeah, because the current.
A big cost.
Yep, the current meters we have, we can no longer get parts for, so.
I mean, I drive down Jackson Street, and you bag those over there above Sixth Street. Why bag them? Just let people park there for free. We put, we bag them and say, no parking. Why do we do that?
Those are meters that we don't have any parts for right now?
So take the bags off and let people park there. They don't know the difference. Just let them park there. They'll probably still put money in them, you know what I mean?
Well.
But I know how it works.
The meter, the interior of the parking meter is missing anyway.
Okay, well, good. Let them park. Why would we stop people from parking, try to get them close to downtown?
We can do that.
My point, what are we gaining by that? We're not getting the revenue anyway, right? So what's the difference?
Right.
Mayor and council, based on this information, I'd request that we defer this two weeks to allow us to put together a formalized proposal that maybe would implement this, if the council has that direction.
Yeah, this is definitely something we couldn't implement overnight. It would take some time to implement it, but it would be, I mean, if that's the route we want to go, we can definitely.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to approve an ordinance that we're going to immediately change.
Okay, so my question is, where would the parking be? Where would people be?
All over, anywhere.
Wherever there's a meter.
In high-volume areas, you could still have parking meters. You could do a combination. Like, I'm not sure you want two-hour parking right outside the front door here.
And we do have areas now that is, that assigned parking, and because we don't chalk anymore, our new handhelds have, it's called a mark mode, and it's pretty labor-intensive because basically what you're doing is you're marking valve stems is what you're doing in the handhelds. So it takes a long, like the United Lot, for example, it would take us about an hour to go through those sixty-eight stalls.
What do you do, taking pictures of it?
No, they've, they're handheld, you, you can put in the handheld whether the valve stems are at two o'clock and ten o'clock, and then when you come back in the two-hour time, you can tell if they've moved or not.
Okay, so my other problem is a twenty-five-dollar ticket. Oh, my God. Okay, so we have people coming, coming from out of town. They're going to come, want to be downtown, shop, do a little something, whatever, and they get a twenty-five-dollar ticket? That's not good PR.
You would have to sign things properly, that's for sure. I mean, I, I just don't want it to be a deterrent. I think a combination could be a good idea. You know, I would want to know a lot more about the Davenport system and look into it because I thought when we had our joint meeting, I thought we were talking about some creative solutions, looking at, and what the revenue we needed to come in versus what was going to be going out. I just want to make sure that we're continuing to have that conversation and look at those numbers.
Well, we'll have no idea what our revenues would be on that two-hour system. That would be.
Yeah, well, I mean, then analyze the Davenport, know what theirs, what their project was.
You're just counting on fines then, right?
Yep, that's all you'd be counting on.
The other worry that I would have is, I mean, you can look right now, Tuesdays are pretty popular with the promenade, with the five-dollar movies, and so a ton of people park down there, and I tell you what, I'm all about having dinner down there and then walking to a movie, you know what I mean? And that's going to be a lot more than two hours. So it's like, well, if I go to dinner and a movie, then I'm fined twenty-five dollars. I mean, I think.
Or you're parking the ramp.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or he throws that city official deal in his windshield.
That's only for official business, right, Alex?
Yeah, you're city official, you were doing, you were making sure that part of Fourth Street was the way we want it.
But that becomes very difficult, like you try to have a bunch of different timeframes because to have a pattern where they're trying to come around to those.
I agree, and that's where maybe it makes sense to have the combination like the mayor is saying. I don't know. I would want to look into that a lot more and see what type of costs we're trying to offset.
That's what the two weeks would be.
Yeah, exactly.
Allow you to do that in two weeks. Dave, I really appreciate.
Or do you want a month?
Okay, then there.
Yeah, because we're going to have to put together because how we're going to do it, what technology we'll use, what the fine should be, if we're going to look at some areas maintaining meters, how we do that, so I would defer it for a month.
Dave, I really appreciate that you put the Davenport example in this informational memo you sent out to council, and I'd like to have you check on Davenport as for the company parking structures they have and how they support those.
Well, see, their structures, as far as what they do, they also do, their structures are all park mobile or prepay. You prepay everything at their structures, and they monitor them just like a parking lot. But, so if you go to a structure, and that's what I like about our structures, is you pay for what you used. You don't go there and try to guess, how many hours am I going to be here? And oops, I put in two hours and I was only there forty-five minutes, I paid for an extra hour that I can't get back. For ours is, when you come back, you, when you block out, you pay for what you used, and I think, I think our parking ramps are the right way to do it. I don't think I'd want to go to their system with the parking ramps where you're guessing how long you're going to be there. I think the on-street parking is where, I mean, if, if that's the direction we choose to go, I mean, I think it's.
I just think we have a lot of meters that serve no purpose. I'll give you that example again, over there on Jackson Street. You don't collect enough money to buy a meterhead on any one of those. I guarantee, you do not, you amortize that cost of that meterhead out, and you don't make enough on that hill. So let's develop a system like this.
And we, and we talked about that, how, and this was like two years ago, is if we could figure out how much we were collecting, but it was just too labor-intensive to have them go collect a block and then go cash it in to see, well, how much did we collect in over how many days? Because we, I agree with you, we've got lots of meters that aren't collecting a lot of revenue.
Well, so we got fourteen hundred meters, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so figure how many meters aren't we using or are just really worth nothing to.
Well, that's, yeah. By the feel of how much money they collect, the, Mike knows where our higher revenue areas are.
You can tell us that now, can't you?
Right, like the library lot, for example, the six hundred block of Douglas, for example, the six hundred block of Fourth Street around the Ho-Chunk Building, those are some of our prime areas.
We have a market for used meters so we can recoup some of our cost.
Used meters, yeah, they got a market for them. It's called Scrap Yard.
Actually, you might be surprised if we found other communities that still had them.
Well, yeah, they might, they might.
Because that's what we were going to do, that's.
Right, that'd be the only.
In our staged implementation of new meters, we are just going to keep all the old ones because we can't get parts for it. So if we told, put them on, I would put them on GovDop, I'm sure somebody would buy them.
You're probably right.
Fourteen hundred.
Anyone else want to be heard?
Hi, I'm Priscilla Forsyth. I live at five oh three Thirty-Eighth Street, but I've worked downtown since two thousand and one. I have a business in the Francis Building. I'm a little concerned about a couple things. This new proposal actually sounds pretty good, but I would ask you to take into consideration, we have both the federal building and the county courthouse. So you are going to have people that are there for court, that are going to be there all day, and if they park and have to leave for six hours, that might be difficult. I mean, granted, they can use the ramps, but my main concern is the ramps. I've been a monthly parker, I think, for fifteen years now in the Martin Luther King ramp. We have been told now that the hotel gets preference now for any reserved. People have asked for reserved parking, and they've been told no, that the priority goes to the hotel, which hasn't even been finished yet. And we've also been told that when the hotel is done and the Commerce Building's done, there's no new monthly parkers. So what I'm wondering is, what about us? You know, we're the people who have the small businesses downtown. I'm not complaining about an increase in fees, but I'm concerned about the policies as long as you're looking at all of it, because you don't want employees on the street, but you're not going to have spaces for them in the ramp. So I'm not sure what the answer is, but it creates a real problem for a lot of us who are small business people downtown. So I just want to make sure that the city's aware of that and that we've been, several people have tried to get, I've talked to one specifically that tried to get a reserve spot and was told that the preference or that there be, the priority is for the hotel already. So I think that's a big concern for our businesses, and I'd ask you to keep that in mind.
I didn't realize, I realized they were running so many stalls. I guess I didn't realize that meant they had designated spot.
I don't believe they have designated spots. We just can't offer additional reserve spots because we would be limited in the number we have available.
So that hurts us.
Yeah, we're actually at a point, I think, with the monthly parkers, that when the hotels come, the hotel and the commerce come online, there will be people that will, we won't be able to renew their monthly contract. That's why we're trying not to accept any new monthly contracts, because we don't want to accept a contract that we know we're going to end up having to terminate at some point.
So then, I guess, where do we park?
Yeah, yeah.
If we can't park on the street or we have to leave for six hours, then it's going to make more sense to move our businesses.
I could try to address that. What we'll look at is people that are, where they're, that are currently parking in MLK and see if we can, we have plenty of extra space in Discovery Ramp and River Landing to see if we could reallocate some parkers into those ramps.
Where it would make sense and not be so far away from your business. You know, I mean, I wouldn't want you to have to be far away from your business either.
Well, I mean, now, it's you, you know, if you have something heavy to carry upstairs and you miss your meter by a minute, it's ten bucks or, you know, so we have that going on now, but I'm just very.
On the meters?
That's on the meters, but I'm more concerned about the monthly parking.
And I would urge you with the meters, I mean, in that given situation, use park mobile. It sends you nowhere, and then you literally.
I don't do that, and there's a lot of us who don't, you know, do the mobile thing, so.
I'm just saying it's an option that we invested in that I think works well.
Well, and that's fine, but I'm more concerned about the monthly parkers, and I just hadn't heard anything about it anywhere except from people in the building who've been asking about their parking contracts. So I just want.
I don't think, I don't think there's a high number of spaces we're over, but that's why we're not, we're not putting new spaces in because we know we have these obligations that are coming.
Okay, that's fine. I just want you all to be aware of that and to think of us too, because we've been down here for a long time.
Absolutely. I agree with you. I agree with you.
So do you want a motion to defer this item?
Anyone else to be heard as long as we're here?
July fifteenth. Is that what you're looking for?
Can I just make a comment? I moved it because I wasn't sure it was going to get done, but I wanted to have the discussion, and I'm glad we had the discussion, but we talked about this in the Public Works Team meeting today, and, and it's been twelve years since the last meter rate increase. We do need new meters, and that's part of what this is about. I think if I understood correctly, we were talking about doing it, it would take, we weren't going to spend eight-hundred thousand dollars all at once, but.
Fourteen years.
One of the major concerns for me is obviously the major capital repairs that Donna mentioned that are necessary for the parking ramps. So I'll be anxious to see what you put together in the next month, but we really need, it seems to me, to be able to make the parking, both the ramps and on-the-street self-supporting so we can continue to support, you know, our infrastructure. Otherwise, one of these days, we're going to get caught where we have just a huge bill or problem that we need to take care of. So again, I'm glad we had the discussion, and I'm not opposed to listening to what we can come up with, but I do know that I don't think anybody, me included, really wants to spend any more than they have to, but at the same time, we have this responsibility to maintain what we have, to keep it in good condition, and to provide for customers to come downtown and, and to be able to do whatever it is they want to do from recreation eating to going into stores. So it's an important issue, and I know it's one that'll be controversial when you raise rates. I'd be more in line with the nine to ten and not a twenty-five-dollar parking ticket, but, but I do know we need to come up with an idea that would generate the funding to allow us to keep moving forward. Otherwise, the only solution it seems to me is to cut services, and I don't think that's what we're looking for, at least not me.
My thing too is if we charge twenty-five bucks, and you're counting on that money to take care of the parking ramps, you're going to have a lot of upset people that are getting twenty-five-dollar tickets. I mean, I think that, that we're kind of, you know, kind of going the wrong way.
As the person who takes most of the phone calls about the nine-dollar tickets?
Go ahead and take the ones for the hundred-and-fifteen-dollar ticket for speeding on the interstate from people from Kansas City and on a regular basis, and that's, they're not fun either, so that's life in the big city. I hate to tell you that.
The one thing I do want to say is, and it's been on social media, is that people need to understand, I think, is like Pete was saying, is the money generated by parking all supports parking. Nothing is being taken from the parking revenues to support anything else. It's only to support the costs that are wrapped up into what it costs us to do parking.
Donna doesn't get any for finance? Really? How come they luck out?
Moore? So the revenue that we'll be getting is coming from the parking ramps if we do this other deal, plus the twenty-five-dollar fines if, correct?
Yeah.
So what we need is money to take care of the parking ramps, basically.
Yeah, I know you do, Rhonda, but you also need to look, I don't think we ever look, again, we have all kinds of areas that we're putting these heads on, fourteen hundred, so divided by eight-hundred thousand, I'm not, today is not.
They're about a hundred dollars a piece.
Hundred bucks. On that hill, there must be eight or nine of them, that you won't get eight or nine-hundred dollars' worth of revenue all year on those, those heads. Would I do that in my business? Probably not. Doesn't sound like a very good return by the time you got to go collect the money and everything else. I want them to look at the areas, and let's be a little bit more global about this, and know with this way we've done it, so let's keep doing it that way. That, to me, is not the answer anymore for this kind of stuff. So make a deal up on that hill. If you park there for more than two hours, you get tagged. I don't care what the fine is if you don't like it that high, but you know what, if people can't read, they deserve a ticket. You know, we say, we don't, we don't cut any slack on somebody that parks in a handicap law, we better never allow that to happen. That's two hundred bucks. So people know how to figure it out.
You just have to be aware of it, you know, kind of like, okay.
I agree.
You know, with the handicap, we have a sign that says.
But don't, don't, when you go to a different city, when I go to Chicago, I look everywhere to figure out, what am I doing here to park to make sure I don't get a ticket when I come back?
Right. And that's, that's what we need. We need signings.
Mayor Scott, I want to correct, it's six hundred dollars a head on those, on the parking meter.
Yeah, that's what, six hundred, okay, well, that's even worse.
That includes a case and then the meter.
I agree, but I'm just saying that's terribly expensive for underutilized areas, and we and we shouldn't spend the capital on those underutilized areas. We should figure out a different approach. I don't know what the answer, maybe Davenport knows areas, but let's not spend that kinda money on a head that doesn't generate that and the next, you'll never, on it. You can't, you wouldn't get a five year return on that thing.
And some of the areas, we've started doing that, like there's an area up by the hospital that used to have meters in it that nobody ever parked in, so we've signed that area now. And that's probably what we will do in that block of Jackson Street.
I think this is a great opportunity though to change a system that we have continually, annually, for decades have been concerned about, looking for an answer. And I think, I think this is really a good opportunity not to pass up, just to review it. And, and as the city manager said, Dave, to get more facts and, and come back to council with a good plan. But I, I'm really, I loved it when I saw your memo come out and you mentioned what Davenport was doing and.
And Davenport right now has one full-time parking person and three part-time enforcement people. And he said they are greatly understaffed for the area that they cover, so.
Davenport's pretty spread out downtown too, though.
He's trying to encourage his powers that be to hire more enforcement staff.
And Dave, if I can just make two last quick comments, I would just say definitely take into account as well the downtown businesses. You still brought a great point that we need to continue, especially when we're looking at adding more retail. We wanna fill our downtown spaces. We need to really be cognizant of that. The second thing that I would say is if we can also look at doing some consistency to these increases, I tell you what, nothing makes me more frustrated than feeling like I'm up on a council now. And this is my term where apparently everyone brings forward every rate increase, no demand on every different project that we have. That's not the way that.
Donna normally does that in years, Rhonda and I run.
I guess.
I hardly noticed that in my eight years here.
Yeah. So, but I would just urge some consistency, because I think twofold, right? Number one, you're gonna get councils up here that are like, no taxes, no increase, no increase ever, and then you have a real dilapidated system. You have parking structures that will go in the negative and will reflect that not, that lack of investment. And so you'll have councils that will do that, and this council, I think, is trying to be strategic about that. But I also don't want it to be a system where it is, you just have a large capital expense. You know what I mean? Like something happened in the parking structure, we really better address it now and increase the rate to offset that cost. I think if there's some consistency and a recommendation at the end of this month where it says, look, every ten years, due to inflation, due to whatever, every ten years, we would suggest this rate increase. You know, and then that council can, I guess, vote it up or down. That's gonna be.
That doesn't mean anything. Next council's not gonna look at that. It's, it's a waste of paper. I hate to tell you that, because they're gonna say, we don't care what, you know, we're not.
But at least then I would like, like say that I'm, I'm not sitting.
But you would say that with water rates and sewer rates too, but at the end of the day, the council that's here is gonna decide whether we like it or not, so.
And what I'm saying is I would just want them to say, well, I know that was the recommendation, but I don't wanna invest in that or I don't believe in that.
The harder part is knowing what our, our capital investment's gonna be because of, like a couple of years ago when we got in Discovery and it turned out that the costs were way higher than what we anticipated and we got not all the work done. We have additional floors in Discovery that still need the same work we did on the first two floors. And that's gonna be upcoming. And we have a lot of expenses, especially with Discovery and Rivers Landing, because they're older, forty-year-old ramps. And then you have, I mean, we're taking, looking at Heritage, which is a ten-year-old ramp that we have a half a million dollars in maintenance, just ten years. The ramps are a very tough environment as far as construction goes. You got heavy loads, a lot of rubber gaskets, a lot of things that can, can break down very quickly that need to be replaced. If they're not continually maintained, they lead to bigger problems when the, the tensioning bars get corroded and. It's.
It's inexpensive.
All right, we're moving on.
Thanks.
Okay, you have a deferral for how long, Robert? July fifteenth?
July fifteenth.
I'll move that. Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Apron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Morse?
Aye.
Eighteen's an ordinance amending the municipal code to establish rate for water purchased by Sargent Blas. First consideration was given June tenth, two thousand nineteen.
Did we get seventeen? Seventeen?
Ah, seventeen's in the middle there, I'm sorry. I didn't, I wanted to pass that by, but seventeen.
I was gonna say another eight.
Ordinance amending the municipal code by increasing permit fees for residential and commercial buildings. Would you like to move that, Mr. Gretkin?
I'll move it.
Duncan?
Yes.
Anyone to be heard?
Well.
Mr. Bertrand?
Hey, Rick Bertrand, fifteen oh one P V Street. I'm actually gonna surprise you, I'm not here to complain on this one, the, the rate going up to seven hundred. I actually kinda do support it. It's probably time, Dennis, we talked about that before. The.
All right.
But I built my first townhouse, townhome about thirteen years ago and I normally throw a tantrum about every other year in permitting, which, talking about how we are permitting townhomes versus a single family when it comes to the, the cost perspective. And I always get the, you need to talk to council and council says when we open up that part of the code and maybe it's time for an amendment. So what I'm here today is I would like to talk about, as long as we're opening up this section of the code to raise the rate, which I completely, I do support the seven hundred. It's only been twenty years, so about three bucks a year. I think it's overdue. But if we're gonna do this, I think we should amend it, guys, to, on a townhome, right now, on the process is it's double the cost. So it would become, right, I mean, it's, you're getting twice the rate for really the same work. And if we kinda rewind and why, I think what was put in place is the idea is that it's, it's twice the work. And if you look at the process itself, you've got, when you bring the plans in, the reviewer reviews it, it goes out to the field, and then the complaint is, is that there's multiple trip, more than multiple trips out there to review the process. Well, I could tell you someone that builds almost exclusively townhomes, there's not, it's not a double duty, if that makes. I think if there's a gouge here, I think it is with the townhome, the duplex development. So what I would suggest is that when you're into the code right now, is that we go from seven hundred bucks is fine, but instead of doubling it up and making it fourteen for the townhome like it is, six thirty-five times two right now, is let's go to a sliding scale. If, if they need extra time, if Brian or Henry needs more time to review the plan, let's bang it for the extra hundred bucks. But I can tell you, the guys in the field, when I talk to them, when they come out and review the footings, they're not making two trips to see when it's time to pour. When it's time to do the floors, they're not making two trips to see if the plumbing's in right. They're, they're single trips. So when they get to the field, it's being treated as a single-family inspection. It is. And so that, it just doesn't hold, hold, if somebody is calling for individual inspections on each side, I don't believe it's happening in the townhome market. So I think it's dated. And so my recommendation is, as long as we're into the code, you know, let's, let's either make it the same seven hundred or make, let's take the seven hundred to an eight hundred or nine hundred, a flat fee that we can then cover the townhomes.
I, I wouldn't disagree with a lot of the statements you made. Yeah, the footings, the foundation, all that kind of is right there at that same time. And I think that was the initial thought twenty-some years ago and this, when, when that went into place back then. And then it got to the point where they were finishing one side and then we're going back and finishing the other. And it was more about the electrical, the plumbing, the mechanical stuff going back, or the fire separation, not all getting done at the same time. And I agree, the sliding scales probably more an accurate way of doing that. I will be coming back to the council again with some more ordinance changes in this code. We're currently revising the plumbing and mechanical code to make it a little simpler and a little easier to comply with. I'm working with the Sioux City Construction League and local boiler installer to bring that back and simplify it and make it a lot easier to obtain those licenses. And we could certainly have time and opportunity to finish working on a sliding scale and maybe get your input as well.
I think you can almost adapt that, Dennis, to the, to the water tapping fees the same way. You're kinda getting double banged on the water tapping fees too. Then you turn around and you go to hook your meters up, you're getting hit twice for the meter usage fee again twice. So I think that twenty years ago, I kinda understood townhomes were a novelty. Now, when you're seeing construction right now, I think it's headed that way. I just think it's a, it's a, it's a general evolution time for that.
By, by far, the majority of this, of the single-family dwellings, if you will, are being built as townhouses now with it, with its own property line and demising walls between them. I would certainly bring back those recommendations, spend some time with it, on a sliding scale. I would ask the council to go ahead and pass this third reading and then we would bring that back as a piece of that and revise that at that time and bring it back. And I would say we would be looking at no more than probably thirty to sixty days to be able to complete that.
Rick, what do you think other communities are doing? Or do you know?
Yeah, they are. When you look at like Sioux Falls and other places, they're going to flat fees like that. And don't get me wrong, I mean, there's, you know, when Henry and those guys or Brian's gotta review the plans, there's, there is a little bit more that goes into it, even though the permit show, shows up about the same time. And truthfully, they've been good. I mean, because it's, they've had to learn the process too, because of the speed of this. But I just, again, we're looking at a twenty-year-old fee, a twenty-year-old code, which just needs to be revised. And, and this is where I think development is going when it comes to costs. And you start putting real dollars to that, Alex, I mean, you, you double that fee up over a hundred and fifteen townhomes over three years, start, that, that turns into all of a sudden some real dollars that we're really not getting the, I'm all for the code and the, you know, supporting it like that, but it just, you're not getting the dollars for it. So that's the only thing there. Another thing, and I'll wait for comments on this, but I'll wait till the, the citizen comments. But on the twenty-eighth street, I wanna talk a little bit about that new intersection at Floyd with Chestnut. We're having some issues there a little bit with some traffic, but I'll come back at general after.
Thanks.
Anyone else to be heard?
Well, I was here last week and objected to the previous reading and I'm gonna just reiterate my objection. It, it just adds another, it adds more to the, to the construction costs and to getting more and getting people to do more construction. You know, you say, well, if you don't do this, then you're gonna, you know, then they'll do something else. But I don't think that, I think we need to nip the bud, nip it in the bud where, where it starts. And that's right now, it's starting to increase it here, and then that doesn't mean you can't increase it somewhere else. Anyway, the, the process of getting, getting a construction. I think i- if you do raise it, I think you need to address the situation in getting, getting it approved in a timely manner. And it's not being done that way now. It's, it's, it takes, even after you've had, you know, gotten an architect or engineer's stamp of what you have to do to, to get a building permit anymore, it just, it takes weeks. And that's just, you know, and that's costs money as well. So I think it's just one thing after another and I think this just adds to it even more. And so they said that, you said last week that it hasn't been, the residential rates haven't increased to over for twenty years. Is that right?
Yeah, it's over twenty years.
What are they going from and to on this new proposal?
They're going up thirty-five dollars for a single-family dwelling.
Thirty-five dollars?
Yes, they go from six.
Well, you know, if you do approve that.
Sixty-five dollars. Excuse me, sixty-five, sixty-five dollars. They're going up sixty-five dollars from six thirty-five to seven hundred dollars.
Seven hundred dollars. Well, I just hope that you address the, the issue of getting it in a timely manner, if you do approve this.
But you would, being a townhouse builder, you would support what Mr. Bertrand is saying, where you would get a lesser fee if, instead of getting whacked twice, you'd get maybe one and a half times on a unit like that. You would support that, I'm guessing?
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else to be heard? Darryl, I would tell you, I thought a lot about this ordinance, because this is probably even more so than parking meters. One of them that frustrates me, right, is because it makes complete sense. In twenty years, we haven't increased anything. And you're trying to offset costs, you have an increase in wages, in time, all of those things, and a lot more permits probably coming in, right?
Yeah, we've reduced staff over the years, the twelve years I've been here, by several people. We used to have five combination inspectors, for instance. We now have three. We had four trades inspectors, we now have three. We've gone from eighteen thousand inspections a year to over sixty thousand inspections a year with a smaller staff.
Exactly. And over twenty.
Wait a minute, timeout, timeout. Let's, when we're doing this, let's get the facts straight. You're not doing sixty thousand.
Not construction, no. It's our department, our entire department.
Right, so let's not, let's, let's, let's be fair here today. Those are rental inspections. We've had fee increases in rental inspections.
Yeah, there was, there was a time period where we went through, matter of fact, I think it was shortly after two thousand twelve, we had, it had been over nine years, I believe it was, that the rental inspections hadn't been done. So we took through a rental inspection increase at that time, excuse me, registration fee at that time. And then most recently, we went in there and did a three-year program, because it had been a number of years, again, been seven years since we'd adjusted that. And so at that time, we went through it a five-dollar increase each year.
But even with building permits, I'm sure they've ebbed and flowed, but I'm sure you had a lot more than when these initially were set. And my point is, over twenty years, if you were to tell someone, well, we haven't increased it in twenty years and now we're looking for thirty-five extra dollars if you're going to build a three hundred thousand dollar home, I mean, that's something that I can understand, that you want to increase that. But then it's another thing where it's like, why did we wait twenty years?
But here's the problem for me. Number one, why do, if I wanna build a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, do I have to pay the same as when Mr. Gretkin builds that three hundred thousand dollar house? And don't tell me there's not a difference in the work, because there.
You're absolutely right.
But I gotta pay that for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house and Mr. Gretkin gets that, we live in similar homes.
Yeah, having some municipal employee.
We don't live in, we don't live in great prosperity. But anyway, we're comfortable where we're at, right?
Yes, exactly.
So, so that you wanna build a three hundred thousand dollar house and you say, well, you get the same fee. And then I do have to agree with Dick. Turn the dang plans out. In Sioux Falls, in the afternoon, you'll have them out. But here, it could take days, it could take weeks. It depends on the mood down there. It depends on whether you upset them the last time around or not. And I'm tired of pussyfooting around on that. Tired of it. I'm just tired of it. It shouldn't matter who brings in that set of plans, they oughta go out. And they oughta go out in the same timeframe. And it doesn't happen. But yet you want me to vote for an increase here when it's about level of service for me. I'll vote for the increase as soon as I see the level of service increase. And I haven't seen that. And, and we talk about it, we talk about it, but it continues, so.
And Darryl, I guess just.
I won't get a garage, a permit to build a garage within three months now, but what the heck?
Darryl, just to finish what I was saying, is I understand the increase. I think it's warranted. I think it's necessary. Twenty years and you don't increase, something is ridiculous. Right, back to the point that I just made about the previous thing.
Absolutely.
However, we also are in a climate where I want all the building in Sioux City that we possibly can have, because we are losing it across the river. We're losing it across the border. We're losing it everywhere. And so for us to come in this climate and say, well, now is the time that we should increase, that is a tough one to swallow.
Looking at this, at the requested proposal, you go back to an information model that was requested by council, I sent out the results of that as we surveyed around, and you look at some of the areas around us. There are flexible scales, like the mayor was talking about, with different sized homes and things like that. And for instance, on an average home, two thousand square foot home, that went through across the board, they ranged all over the place. We were at the low with South Sioux City telling us there, where, it doesn't matter where we're gonna be at, they're always gonna be right below us. But you look at Dakota Dunes, was it seven hundred dollars? Ames, for instance, was it a thousand dollars? Council Bluffs, was it sixteen hundred dollars for that permit fee? Sioux Falls was at over a thousand dollars for that same permit fee. So, I mean, market-wise for cost of that building permit, we're at or below.
Now, does that include the electrical and the plumber? Do they have to pay extra?
They pay extra for that. We do not charge extra for that.
You understand my frustration?
No, absolutely. Yeah.
By the way, that's residential. Commercial has been raised in, in two thousand twelve, so it's been only seven years since.
Yeah, two thousand and twelve was the last commercial.
Sure. What exactly does this permit provide with?
The permit?
Yeah.
For residential permit?
Any of them.
Just, well, can you just give your name and address for clerk, please?
Brett Watchhorn, thirty-six ten Claude Avenue.
Yeah. Permit free for the building permit. We'll do your plan review. Make sure it's planned, depending on the type of permit it is. If it's a single-family dwelling, that would also include electrical permit for the electrical inspections, the plumbing permit, the mechanical permit for all those inspections, as well as a construction.
And what are these inspections for? Is what I'm saying, who?
To make sure that it's being done to code.
To code?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Still don't see why it's seven or not.
Well, with that all said, it's, there's never a good time to raise fees. Bump that out, right?
Well, the difference here is you have support of the various associations.
Oh, for sure.
Bertrand.
The Home Builders Association, yes.
Sees it.
Got a homeowner, home builder. So no, I totally agree. But nobody's, anytime we, we have to raise fees or need to do it, people are not obviously happy or excited about it and I understand, but some things, you, you just gotta do it.
Honestly, I think what I'm, what I would like to see is just, and it sounds like we wanna look at the code as far as the townhomes and really restructuring that.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm committed to that a hundred percent. Like I said, I'll be bringing that back to council, the, with the boiler fees and probably a roofing ordinance as well. I can bring all that back at the same time and we can readjust at that time. If we can get third pass today, I can bring her back in thirty to sixty days.
But let me finish. What I'm thinking then is what the mayor's point was, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home versus a three hundred thousand dollar home, rather than us saying today, let's just increase our flat fee, why don't we look at making that a sliding scale? I think if we looked at places, whether it's North Sioux, I, I think that they have a different price point for whether or not.
Dakota Dunes does, yes.
Dakota Dunes.
Yeah, and it's, depends on the type of structure, the square footage of the structure, the square footage of the garage. All of those things are on a slide scale.
So would it be possible to look at that? Because then it would be increasing for the larger homes and everything to offset the cost. And if it was a smaller home like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less, at least then it's less there or more affordable there. I mean, I think that would be palatable for everyone, rather than a flat increase. I know that's not what you want there.
No, and that's okay. I just wanna make sure that when we do it, we're not rushed into. into, you know, we don't rush that scale, and make sure we're making the right decisions just because one particular department does it one way and one does it another way. Then you also have to base it on, how do you evaluate that property? Do you take it by square footage? Do you take it by valuation? Because there's a lot of communities that will do it based on valuation. Well, we all know that, you know, when permits get sent in...
People get frustrated about that.
They never put the right valuation on it anyway, because the markets go to change, particularly people are gonna perceive it differently, and they don't want to oversell their their property as far as valuation for tax purposes and things like that. So that's not always a really good way of doing it either. So, square footage, you know, you don't determine what the finishes are then, at that point, you know, is it a, you know, how nice are the finishes? Because you might have a 2,000-square-foot house.
But would that matter with your...
Probably not.
You're not looking at finishes, you're looking at...
Probably not.
Valuations it would, but otherwise it would not, so...
Probably not worth the, that deep look into, but...
Absolutely, we can certainly do that, we just want to make sure we're making the right scale, right?
That's what I would be...
Do we have a motion?
Pete moved.
You have a second?
Yes.
Anyone else be heard? We're gonna be here till midnight if we don't...
Thanks, Darryl. I have to be somewhere by 8:00.
Got a grandkids' baseball game at 7:30, and I'm gonna promise you, I'm not gonna miss that for this meeting, so let's roll.
I'm with you.
Thanks, Darryl.
Yes. Thank you. It passes 3 to 2. Scott and Waters are negative today. 17th, 18th, an ordinance amending municipal code to establish rate of water purchased by Sergeant Bluff, first consideration approved June 10th. We need a motion for second reading. I'll move it, I guess.
Second.
Curious, when did Sergeant Bluff bought and water from us for a long time? Not that I don't want to help my friend John Winkle out down there, but, you know, they kinda, I was, I happened to have been here when they said, we're building our own water plant, we'll never need you again, what happened?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council Brad Pitts, Water Plan Superintendent. As it states in the RCA, they've, I'm sure as you're aware, they had some issues with their water treatment plant in the last design. In the near future, they're gonna be making some pretty extensive improvements, and they need to purchase water. We obviously have the connection in place at this time, they've asked, and we went through negotiations for a rate to provide them with the water while they're going through their water plantings.
That's what bothers me, there's no guarantee for a long-term purchase here. We're in trouble now, you had to be around, there's a history here for me, when they built their own plant. And now all of a sudden, they're in a jam down there, and much as I want to be a good neighbor, I kinda remember those days, so this is just a short-term fix.
Yep.
And yet they don't think they're gonna need any water in the future from us, ever.
There's been very brief discussions on potentially putting together an emergency contract, but at this point in time, there's no talk of an extended agreement to this nature.
Passes 4 to 1, I vote no. Is there anybody opposed to waiving statutory rule?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Passes 4 to 0, or 4 to 1, I vote no. 19th, the resolution rejecting all bids for the Floyd Boulevard sanitary sewer interceptor emergency repair deferred from June 3rd and 10th, 2019. Thought you guys were gonna reject this last week.
We do, Mayor and Council, we deferred it an additional week until we got a better idea of what was going on with the KP work. Based on the work that was discovered, once they exposed the pipe, we do know we will bid out a pipe replacement, not likely the amount of work that was originally anticipated. We've reached out to contractors, who have provided some input on, as we develop the new bid specs, what should be included, and we'll work with them on developing a new bid spec for a smaller-scale project.
And also a cleaning project for downstream.
$4,000 a day for those pumps, boys, time is kind of of urgency here for this stuff. Acting in an urgent manner, are we getting plans ready and...
Plans are being ready now. They're not ready yet, but they're, they're work, being worked on.
Gordon, right, Gordon, right now, so we're, we're just sitting waiting for those, right, correct?
Oh, no, we're recommending at this point...
We reject this bid.
Reject this bid, because...
No, no, I didn't make myself, no, but what's going on down there right now? There isn't anything, correct?
No, we, we do, we're gonna have KP install a downstream bulkhead, because the, right now, the sewage is leaking up the pipe, because the pipe's so flat, it's not a very steep pipe, there's sewage backcharging through and leaking out the separated joints, so we need to stop that.
They have, KP has a bit of work to do, but then we will end the time and materials contract with them as soon as the bulkheads are installed.
Are we under what their estimate was?
I believe so, yes.
The time and material, yes. They're approximately, I think it was 31,000 as of Friday. That I included into a council memo too.
Yeah, that went up this afternoon.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? I'll move it, Rod moved it.
Second.
Passes 5, 0. 20th, discussion of an ordinance amending municipal code to increase sewer rates and add new definitions for industrial user.
Mayor and Council, Donna Fork, Finance Director, and Mark Sims, Utility Director. We are today just gonna be presenting information, we will be bringing forth an actual ordinance to you, but we wanted, because there's such a radical change in what we're doing this year with rates, we thought it was necessary that we took the presentation you had with cost of service study, and then mirrored it with what it would affect rate-wise, and so today, we're just having discussion. The cost of service study was a contract that we entered into based on requests from sister cities, major industrial users, and staff to actually determine where the services are being expended on our wastewater treatment plant and our collection system. Through this study, we provided history of our capital, history of our fixed assets, history of our expenditures, and our CIP going forward, and our operating budget. This was all developed into a model that we used to project rates for the upcoming year. In the model, it determined that the domestic Sioux City should remain flat for the first year, that domestic Sioux City should increase 6.5% in the year after, which would be the 20 on fiscal year. Total revenue for the whole system is a 7% increase, but the residential, due to the way the weighting goes, would only be a 6.5. The flow charge for sister cities would increase, the flow charge for industrials, we created another category of industrials, we have those within the city limits and those that are not in the city limits. We have the mass charges that are increasing, and we also added a solid component of TKN. And then this study also allocated the strength based on the flow factors and the things that the plant handles. The capital proj, the capital projects are on this slide, showing what we are looking at going forward, starting with the year starting in July. We also have some capital projects that are currently going, that'll be on the next slide, but as you can see, the majority of the expenses are infrastructure and maintaining the plant. Currently, we have a few projects that do have balances that we'll need to recover balance for. The Bacon Creek Channel had a repair. The wastewater treatment and the asset renewal are waiting for a state revolving loans, but in order to do that, I have to have a rate increase in place to get my debt coverage. And I have about $5 million there, and then the Northern Valley, that is a repair we had not anticipated. You know, right now, we're looking at 1.2 million, but after what they've discovered, hopefully that number's gonna come down. If you look at the sewer fund without a rate increase, you can see that by 2024, we go vastly negative. Always in the past, we've talked about our enterprise fund balance policy, where over the five-year period, we need to have 20% of fund balance. We usually hit between 15 and 18. But the new thing that has happened is the Iowa Finance Authority put in a new rule that in order to get state revolving loans, you must have 110% debt coverage, that your fund balance to expenditures must be at least 110%.
And what would rate increase be in year 2020 to get to 110 rather than 112.7? Because it's based on an estimate, is all you have to estimate that you're gonna get there.
Yeah.
So what would that rate increase be to...
It would be 0, 6.5, 5.25, 5.25, 5.25. But that's also taking into account a low estimate on the renewable energy project, a 4.2.
On cost or revenue?
On revenue.
So, you're projecting a 7% increase in the year, in fiscal year 2020, which starts a year from now?
No, 2020 starts in July.
We're in, yeah, okay, so you're projecting a 7% increase?
7% increase for the utility overall. So when you implement the cost of study, it reflects the residential at nothing the first year, unless we want to split that up.
Where does 6.5 go down? 6.5? You're talking 7%?
7% is what the whole fund needs. But with the cost of service, that means the people that use the plant more pay more.
Right. But what would the rate increase be to get to 110%? Because that's the only number, I don't, I don't care about, you telling me 20%, that's ridiculous, no business has 20% cash other than the city. So what, I don't care about your 13.9 fund balance, I don't care about that, because that's plenty of cash to pay your bills.
Yeah, 110, to get 110%, you're slightly less than 7% for the first year.
You get us what that slightly less is? Not today, whenever in a memo.
Yeah. And that gets you the first year, I need to, and you have to have two years of the 110, so the reason we're going for a two-year rate increase, get the 110 for both years.
Yeah, but you're at 130% in the next year.
That is correct.
That's pretty salty if you don't need it, and...
But that is also, when I was assuming a July 1st rate increase, now we're looking more like a September 1st rate increase.
Oh, I'd like you to look at that.
The assumptions that we did make in this fund analysis is, we determined that we would potentially generate $2 million worth of renewable energy the first year, that would be dependent upon how quickly we can get us certified. So that's, that's a, an if. And then 4 million the next year, and then 4.2 going out. Depending on the market, that money could go up, which could eliminate those fives that I was talking about. Or we could decide to do something else with the renewable energy project.
Somewhat disappointing is, we were supposed to be selling gas in 2019, right?
That is correct. Hence why I have not had a rate increase, I've been waiting for this project to kick in.
And what is the timeline on that, Mark? Where...
Still, the best projections are February of next year, we'll be injecting gas, selling gas.
Another factor in this is, we have all the expenditures for Big Ox Energy, but none of the revenue, they currently owe just slightly under $3.1 million. And then the implementation of the study, which is why the rates look different than they previously have. In the past, we've just said, if we needed 7%, we just did it across the board. If we were to do this 0 and 6.5, and this is why we're talking today, is how you want to structure this, this is what the typical residence, a senior citizens residence, a family restaurant, and a large family would pay in a year, including sales tax. So you'd be at 2940 for the typical. In the second year, senior citizens, which use about six CCFs, be 2260. A large family, just slightly under $40. And a small restaurant of 104 per year, including tax.
Donna, can you go back to the other slide on the 3.1 million? What's on the horizon for that? What's, what's that look like? The repayment? What's the non, what's the non-payment going, what's that mean? What's that convert...
Means you're not gonna get paid.
No, but what's that mean, though, in terms of rate, sewer rates?
Figure it out, if you had that 3.1 million dollars, we wouldn't be having this little discussion today, we'd be out of here by now, but...
Well, no, we'd find a different reading.
Well, go back to the chart, seriously, not joking. You'd add, you'd add, if you're $5.4 million ending fund balance, you'd be in Tall Clover for a few years.
I, yes, we would have...
That's Big Ox cost our community that kind of money.
And unfortunately, because it is very, collect, the collection is uncertain, I cannot use that revenue as projecting forward.
We have to act as if we're not getting any of it.
That is correct.
Or react.
We do have the expenditures in there, because obviously we've incurred them.
We are attempting to collect it.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I don't know what attempts we're making, I, I just, I'm asking. So we are, that's a yes?
We, we have conversations all the time about it.
If you want closed session for this, maybe that's where it's more appropriate, but I just want to know.
No, there is conversation.
I just didn't want to skate over that.
Mayor and Council, we'll come back with closed session to discuss that issue.
Yeah, but I don't want to sugarcoat it, I want the...
Yeah.
Press out there and the public to know, this rate increase is a direct result of Big Ox, and we, our hands are gonna be very limited with them in bankruptcy about what we can do to collect that.
Correct.
I don't, you do it in closed session. I don't care if we do it in open session, quite frankly, it's irresponsible, as they acted, in my opinion, and I hope they, their attorney writes me a letter, I've had meetings with them, so it won't be like we don't know each other. It's just terribly unfortunate that we're gonna have a rate increase because of that.
And it's frustrating that oftentimes, it's the council or it's positioned as it's our decision of, oh, we just want a rate increase, we just are doing this as often as we can, when it's, no, we have to cover our costs as well. And when you have a 3.1 million dollar fall due to one company, we have to offset that somehow. We don't really have a choice, because at the end of the day, everyone wants to be able to flush their toilet.
But Donna said it earlier, I mean, what's really driving this 2Z debt coverage ratio?
Right, I have a lot of, I have $5 million currently that we've spent on engineering and ordering some parts and things for the plant and for the renewable energy, that I've reached the point where I really do need to have cash in the sewer fund.
And that's, the 110 was the law that was passed, right? What was it previously?
None. As long as I showed that I had positive cash flow, we would have been fine.
So now the state restricts and says, no, you have to have 110%, so now we have to pass that along to our consumers.
And normally, we'd have way above 110%. We've just been eating down balances, waiting on certain things to fall into place.
I was gonna say, you, you still would have needed a rate increase.
Well, but what might be different in this case, maybe, since I'm a hopeful type, is that when we get the, when Mark gets the, the biogas sales generated...
Well, had that kicked in when it was supposed to, you wouldn't be having this discussion either, my friend.
No, but when it does kick in, Mayor, and it turns out to be better than we even expected, what I'm trying to say is, I want to have something in place where we say to the rate payer, now that we're collecting that, we can start to reduce our rates, and we can, we can cut them, like has been done... And we can, we can cut them like has been done one, one time. One time before.
Last time the mayor was on council.
Yeah, but I don't want to just, and I know we can't bind future councils, but we can sure have a plan that says if we do this now because we're in this position, when we start selling and we're making a profit, what do we do with that profit? And what do we do for the rate payers?
Well, and the hope is that we can collect from Big Ox as well. I mean, I agree with you.
What I like is a positive city council, these, their.
Optimistic.
The energy is what drops me and brings me back.
You've got us young guys. I was going to say, you've got us young guys in here.
We have a big flow going.
We need another parade is what we need. Keep them in mind, though, seriously, because we talk about, we.
No, I agree with you. I wish, I wish what you're saying was true. But the reality is we were supposed to be selling gas September of 2019, I believe. Was our original date.
And then it got pushed to November.
The mayor.
Of last year.
But of '18, you're right.
Yep.
So there's, let's be conservative and say there's 3 million bucks. It's gone. 3 million bucks got eaten up by Big Ox. Now the 3 million that you're not punching into this projection because we're starting in February. I mean, all of a sudden, you're talking a lot of money here. A lot of money. And that's the concerning part for me is we, we seem to be missing these deadlines. And, you know, as I look back on Big Ox, I'm not sure that we had any real authority in that contract, which I hope we all learned a valuable lesson from. And I'm not faulting the legal department, and I'm not faulting you. But we need to have, in an industry like that in the future, we need to have some way to shut that thing off, which we didn't have the right to do, which is unfortunate.
Go back, Mayor, my part, part of my point is, Donna, go back, and I'm not doing this to, I just want to have a really healthy discussion on this. I'm not trying to do anything other than get to the right answer. But go back about three slides where you have the sewer fund balance analysis.
Right.
Okay, well, look at the debt coverage ratio at the bottom of that, that you pointed out earlier. So we don't, in, in 2024, we don't have to end up at 151%, do we?
Mayor and Council, this, this analysis shows that we're trying to get to between a 15 and 20% percentage of fund balance to expenditures, which we have a policy in place which staff is supposed to develop rates so that we end up with a fund balance policy between 15 and 20%. So it shows that in 2024 with these, we end up with a 15.96% balance.
So the three years preceding that, we're at the 10?
Yeah, are below our, are below our own balance policy.
Yeah, but 10% is more than, you're always still able to pay your bills because you're always 30 days. Most households would gladly be able to just have enough money at the end of every month to pay next month's bills. I mean, that's reality, but, and you guys now bill monthly. So it isn't like you can say, I'm only going to collect every three months like it was when I was here the first time around. We only bill like every 90 days back in there. I don't know how you cash flowed back then, but.
And we only are going for two years because of the uncertainty with some of the things that are out in, with the renewable energy and other things. I just wanted to talk about the two years because that's what we need.
Well, I appreciate that, but for budgeting purposes for the rate payers, so that like the six and a half percent, we could, could we split that up to two years?
We could.
Three and a quarter and three and a quarter, so you're not hit with a, a six and a half percent increase?
Well.
I don't know if that's a good idea or not. I don't want to think it through.
Exactly, because the decision is, do you have the six, the following year, not this year? And you get hit with the, what, $22 or something for the senior rate? Or do you have three and a half now, three and a half then? So then you have what, you know, $10 this year that you didn't account for and $10 the next year? I mean, I, I think you have a good point, Dan.
And it is easier when you have smaller, gradually.
Well, you could easily do three and a half percent for four years and not, it wouldn't make that much difference. Especially if you do three and a half percent now that you didn't, well, not.
What's a compounding, yes.
Right.
But I like the two-year plan, Mayor.
You like what?
The two-year plan. We're doing, we're looking at two years only right now.
Right, right.
And evaluate where you're at with those other projects.
Right, and once that renewable energy does kick in and we start going and we see what markets we're getting into, that will give us a much better estimate of what the revenues will be.
How we're able to offset costs our, our consumers.
Mayor and Council, there's just a few more slides there that are in your packet. And really, these are designed to kind of show you what the impact would be on people other than our domestic users. So.
This is huge. This is a.
Yes, it is. So industries inside and outside of Sioux City, as well as the sister cities. So you can see if we use the cost of service model, the flow charge for major industries inside Sioux City would go up to 459 per thousand from the 246. Now, kind of keep in mind that what we asked HDR to do was look at what it actually costs us to treat each various parameter that we have to treat. And so we'll kind of go through each one of those. In some cases, they go down. And so the impact on each individual industry is unique to that industry, depending upon what they discharge.
Doesn't matter. Overall, you're putting a significant increase on industrial users.
Yeah, if, if you use this model.
And how come, how come you'd be different, how come it's cheaper? I mean, you're almost sort of saying, go to North Sioux, it's going to be cheaper.
I believe that's, and we got Brian Backy here from HDR if you have questions. But I believe that's because we do not include the conveyance system that they use within Sioux City. I mean, only what they use within Sioux City.
See, that's a problem for me because the North Sioux people, definitely that huge project you've got cleaning that sewer line is not city of Sioux City waste. It's coming from them, but yet you're not allocating that.
No, it does allocate that for the sister cities.
Well, then why would it be any different? Why would it be any different, the rate?
For Sioux City, you mean?
Keep in mind, our rates include all our feeder sewer system, our customer service billing. They just have a commodity rate. They add all their own, using North Sioux as an example. This doesn't account for any of the sewer system within the South, the North Sioux City limits. It doesn't account for utility billing. It doesn't account for any of those costs. It's a ball crate where ours is all inclusive of everything that, that goes into.
Yeah, all of John O'Brien's crudes. And everything is in our cost, with the exception of that portion allocated to trunk lines. So the majority of his expense.
I know what you're saying, but I'm not, we build these major sewer lines for outlying areas. If you didn't have what you have in North Sioux, you wouldn't have that line coming down those railroad tracks. You wouldn't have the major, major cleanout that you have. But I know this guy's smarter than I am when it comes to cost allocation, but, so, but.
And this looks at the, the pollutants of concern, we call them. And you'll notice one change here from what is, what we've looked at in, in previous rates. And that is addition of a TKN charge. TKN is total caldol nitrogen, and I won't bore you with the details unless you ask questions about that. But nitrogen and phosphorus are things that DNR and EPA will be regulating us on in the future. TKN is something that we're regulated on now. We have a maximum allowable headworks loading, our design loading for our treatment plant. And we are in excess of that at this point. But you can see the benefit that industrial users do get is they don't pay that domestic charge. Their, their charges don't start until they get past that domestic level, and then they start paying. But you notice TSS, BOD, both go down in this scenario. And then FOG, which is very problematic for us, does go up. We'd like to keep that out of the collection system and have a way to get that transported to the treatment plant, which, where it could be potentially beneficial to the biogas project.
For some that are trying to catch up with you, TSS is what?
Total Suspended Solids. That's the solids that end up being sludge that we plan to play.
BOD?
BOD also becomes sludge, believe it or not. But it's dissolved solids as well as solids that are too small to measure. The BOD is the strength of the wastewater. How?
Fog is the, the oil.
Fog is the grease.
Grease.
So you can see TKN is a, is a new charge, and a lot of the charges here kind of shift to that. And this would impact those that discharge TKN to us more than anybody else.
That's where the rates are going to be a lot higher because of, because of the TKN.
Right, and, and we did have a meeting this afternoon with several of the industrial users. And we have several individual meetings already scheduled with those that are most impacted. So we can kind of walk through specifically what their impact would be, since each one is so unique.
And I'd like to add one more thing. We are also going, we're exploring ways to provide incentives to have them treat for TKN at their facility, thus reducing not only their sewer costs, but our treatment costs. We're looking at providing financial incentives to partner with them to do that at their site rather than at ours.
And are you saying with the domestic strength, when they are here local then, that that's where they have the advantage?
Industrial users regardless, inside or outside, don't get a domestic charge.
Mark, can you go back to that slide for a minute?
Sure.
Could you help me on the TKN, the extra strength at 84 cents? What's that convert, what would that mean for one of the industrial?
Like for.
Users, just general.
Like for Seaboard.
In terms of a number?
Yes.
Probably the 84 cents would, if you use that, we did several analysis. I think that the April bill would have been another, close to $90,000. Their existing bill is probably about $300,000 a month.
So they're over a million bucks a year now.
They're what?
Well, they get charged a month that, right?
That'd be a million bucks a year increase.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's why we're looking at providing incentives to partner with them to do some things that they could do themselves that would reduce that cost.
But, but not without costs. I mean, that's the problem. For me, we encourage them to come to the community. And now you put a million bucks on them. And you can tell me, well, they'll do it on-site. Well, they can do it on-site, but it's still going to cost them at least a half a million probably that we've added costs for them.
Mark, does that 90,000 include what they would save in BOD and TSS though? So that's the net?
Yeah, actually, yep.
Well, and that's where I struggle too, and I've talked with Mark about this, is that it's like, well, I don't want to, some of our users that are here to have this increase and say, gosh, we came to your community. We invested all of this stuff, and now you're charging us all this additional. But the way that I look at it as well is I need to protect our constituents. They, yeah, well, it's causing a lot of undue pressure on our system. We have to, we have to improve our system or at least start addressing this. Or we're going to have real problems down the road. So who do you give a break? You give the break to these users that are using TKN, which is really detrimental to our system? Do you charge them or do we keep increasing rates on our?
Didn't even know what TKN was a year ago, but.
Exactly, and so when you.
Didn't even know what it was. But now, all of a sudden, we found a couple million bucks that we can, we can nail people. Because a year ago, we didn't charge. A year ago, we didn't know what it meant. But now you're probably two million bucks in this budget of TKN. I'm guessing that's probably conservative. That's what, it just.
My opinion, Mayor, could have been looked at years ago.
Just when I think we get our hands wrapped around something around here, we don't. I mean, that's just the reality for me.
What were you going to say, Mark?
Well, and keep in mind, regulatory drives a lot of this. So nitrogen and phosphorus are, are things that are obviously hot now, hot button items now for the state, as well as EPA. And so they're going to definitely be regulating nitrogen and phosphorus.
They're going to regulate it on the renewal of your plant. I've been to enough League of Cities meetings to know that. You're, as long as you were in compliance of your last, last certification, which was about five years ago, six years ago, then I'm not sure that you're telling, I mean, I'm not calling you a liar, don't get me wrong. But my understanding from going to those meetings, and Bob won't let me go anymore after this, is once your plant was in compliance, it's in compliant for 10 years, until you have to re-certify that plant.
And that's what we're going through now.
Right, we, we are, we're in the middle of the application.
We're recertification.
Every five years, we have a new permit, and we're in the middle of the application now.
Every 10?
It's every five. We get a new permit every five years.
Well, then that's.
And the indication.
Because I told you, the League of Cities, a couple of years ago, I remember, like when I'm sitting here, it's every 10 years is what they said. And they have the Fox people, they're teaching that class. So anyway, if you're in the middle of it, then you do have to comply. I would agree.
Yeah, and we've, we've been told that, that the ammonia nitrogen limit that we have at our plant now will be cut in half with that new permit. We don't have too much difficulty meeting that now, but we will probably, with the amount of TKN that we get, which is a nitrogen, you know, ammonia nitrogen's part of TKN.
If we don't address it now or if we don't start treating it.
Right.
So, Mark, with the regulatory law that's coming down, coming our way, does HDR Engineering, are they finding that in other communities as well?
Yeah, definitely. And they did a nutrient reduction strategy, which is report, which is required by the state two or three years ago, I believe, that we had to submit. We asked for a grace period from DNR because that was about the time that Big Ox and Seaboard were going to come online. We knew that was going to change the characteristics of our waste, which it did. And so we said, this isn't reflective of what Sioux City will look like going forward. Give us the time to be able to see what's going to happen during this period. We're at the end of that two-year period now, so we have to issue another report to the state, a follow-up letter saying, here's what we found. And it's different, definitely different. Nitrogen is an issue for us.
So, and I'm not saying we're doing this because it wouldn't be smart. But, so if we were to ignore TKN, as far as the charges go, would that then be spread evenly?
You would ignore a lot of the costs that we have for treatment. TKN is probably our largest expense at this point. When we see phosphorus come in, that'll probably be a larger expense yet.
How would that be paid for if we didn't do this?
It's right now, we're treating TKN, and it's just being spread amongst all the other users and their rates. We have to treat for it now, and it takes, takes four and a half, it takes three times more oxygen to treat TKN than it does BOD.
Industrial users or are you talking about all users? The residential as well?
Any, any nitrogen that comes to the plant, it takes that much more. But the, the major contributors of TKN are industrial.
But I mean, the payers, if we didn't look at this rate structure difference?
You'd have to spread the rate increase that you're looking at over everybody.
What, what we've always done in the past, since I've been here almost, we've always just done it straight across the board. We have not actually done a rate study where we were splitting it based on usage. So if we were to do that, we'd go back and do a 7% across to everybody.
Residential and industrial then would be?
Yes.
Treated the same?
Yes.
And there's outside municipality flow charge. You have that in your packet. And outside improvement district, which in this case would be Dakota Dunes. The other charges that would be potentially modified with the cost of service would be the ones that you see here, direct dischargers, people that bring waste in a truck to us, and we discharge right into the digester. And then the other things you can kind of follow along with.
Mark, why would the, on the outside municipality impact the current rates 2.16? And on the Dakota Dunes, the current rate's 2.956?
They had an agreement, because they came on later, that they were going to place, pay some catch-up to help pay for some of the costs that we'd incurred that they're taking advantage of.
Those are separate.
And so they, they reached that point where we feel that they're equitable to the other sister city.
Okay, thank you.
And this slide here just shows you where our sewer rates are for residential currently. We are in the middle of the pack, not that that's good, bad, or indifferent, but just so you do know whether we're being, it's reasonable or not.
Donna, do you know where this would move us if they did the rate increase? Or is, or is this with the rate increase in place?
Well, that doesn't have a first-year rate increase, so the second-year rate.
Just for residential then?
So you would be just slightly under $40, which would still put us just ahead of West Des Moines. But otherwise, we'd still be behind those.
But this is just for residential?
Yes, this is just residential.
And this is with the six?
This is not with it because I'm doing next year's. This is just next year's, and there was no projected rate.
Oh, but you're saying with the six and a half.
With the six and a half, I'd be slightly under 40.
How did your one o'clock meeting go today?
Um.
That you can say.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, I guess, you know, there were probably twenty or twenty-five sister city and industrial reps there. Really only one, uh, concern expressed by one of the industries. Um, I don't know that anybody else really had any significant comments.
No, but I think they're waiting for the one-on-ones with us to talk, I think, because each one's unique. I think we'll be knowing more as we start having our interviews with everybody.
Did they show an interest in these incentives that?
We've.
Are you looking at those, or is HDR coming up?
Uh, kind of, uh, we've asked HDR for their, you know, their input on ideas, but we've already talked some to the industries about this and asked for their ideas, and some, we've seen, we've received some ideas that I think deserve further discussion. Um, and I don't know that we want to talk about those at this point, but, uh, industries are, have been aware of this for a while. Uh, doesn't mean they know what the numbers were until today, but, uh, they, they are aware it's going to be a significant difference for some of them, and so they at least have expressed interest in finding ways to, to offset that.
You're looking at, Donna, about sixty days out then?
Yes.
If you had.
And that's.
You had the ordinance and had your way, it, I mean, it would start September one, which.
Right, and that's in order so the sister cities could get their rates in place, because otherwise they don't have the revenue to, to generate it back to us, and I don't want to put them in a financial hardship either.
As mentioned, today was just a presentation to start the discussion. Uh, we will start presenting the actual ordinance changes next week.
Before you meet with industrial?
No, they're meeting with them this week.
That's the one-on-one meetings?
Yes.
Yeah.
Will you have any other public meetings other than council?
None scheduled at this time.
So you're building three, at least three, I mean, you're building?
Well, three readings, at least.
Oh, I think so, yeah.
Also, you want us to project out at a, at a split first year, second year with the rates?
Yeah, yeah, I'd be in favor of that.
Okay, then we'll do that.
And you made a note to look at the rates the mayor brought up as far as the one hundred ten?
Yeah, to discover debt coverage, yes.
Yeah. I, I will go back and do a projection, see what the rates would be if I'm just meeting the one hundred and ten.
Not the one twelve, et cetera.
Right. But keep in mind though, it will take the rate increases in the out years if we don't generate extra revenue with renewable energy. Those will be larger, which, you know, those are.
What are you projecting in those out years?
Right now I'm at about five and a half for three, five and halves.
You projecting in gas revenue?
Four, four million in twenty, twenty-one, four point two the rest of the years.
Okay.
That's a conservative.
That, that would be if we could not get into the California markets, what, what the engineers have told us we, we should generate.
But if you get in there, it's like double that, isn't it?
That would be in the eight million dollar range.
And is that because now we're behind?
It, it just depends on the quality of your gas.
Yeah.
And who you're hook, who your contracts are with. It, it really is timing.
It's related to the offtake agreements and, and how competitive the market is, so, uh, but we've been working on it for some time. We're about ready to.
I hope we get on it.
Issue, we're about ready to issue RFP for those offtake agreements.
Did, um, does HDR have any comments or anything to add? I mean, because when you sit back and watch the presentation and hear our questions, is there anything that came to mind, like, oh, I wish I could say this, or the mayor and the council need to know that, or, I'm just curious as to what some of your observations have been?
Brian Backy with HDR Engineering, seven twenty-five Northeast Eighth Street, Ankeny. I, I think the conversation was very beneficial. I mean, the last time we presented here, and it was not myself, it was Sean Corn. We understand that it was a pretty high-level introduction, but I, I think you guys grasped the concepts and the issues pretty, pretty well. Um, I, I don't think, um, you know, large increases at, at one time are generally accepted, so the smaller incremental, you know, as time goes on, is, is usually more accepted by the public and the industry. So, and I think, you know, the way it's been presented, and I think we need to go back and take a little better look at that, um, to even those out a little bit. You mentioned the gas revenue. Um, we know a little bit about that. I, I think California is a tougher, tougher sell than it used to be, so getting into it sooner rather than later will help. Um, there's a lot of dairy projects coming online, and that's going to create a lot of competition for the low-carbon fuel standard. Um, and then, you know, everything we talked about from a treatment perspective is, is accurate as well. TKN, even though it's new to you, it's been around for a while, and it drives all the costs at the treatment plant. And with ammonia limits going down, apparently, that, uh, that will only continue. I guess I, I would, you know, um, I comment that, you know, you should take a look at that permit. I, I don't know why the ammonia limit's going down. I know they're going down in Nebraska because of water quality criteria due to freshwater snails and mussels, but we've heard from DNR on the Iowa side that they aren't really looking at that, that way. They're looking at nutrients, nitrogen and phosphorus, um, more, more aggressively. So, I guess, have somebody look at that permit, maybe challenge it a little bit, um, the technical basis of it, and see if you can't get some relief from that perspective. Um, other than that, I, I appreciated all the comments. I, I think you, you've made some, some good ones, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Donna.
Rachel Jacobson, thirty fifty-seven Stone Park Boulevard. Um, I just wanted to make a comment in respect to the projected rate increases. Um, some of you were talking about possibly splitting it up into three and a quarter, three and a quarter, spreading it out a little bit more. Um, most of that discussion was over my head, but as far as bill paying, I personally would prefer the Band-Aid approach. Rip it off quickly and get it over with. Do a couple of solid increases that people can wrap their heads around, instead of having to expect another increase, another increase, another increase annually. One solid increase to get the job done and get the income to where it needs to be, and then leave the rates alone going forward unless some catastrophic disaster occurs.
Anyone else be heard? We'll go to Citizen, oh, you want to be heard on sewers?
No, Citizen Concerns.
Yeah, just give me a second. Citizen Concerns, anyone want to be heard on that? Go ahead now, come to the microphone, state your name and address, please. You got time, slow down, you're good.
I'll keep it short. Dave Boganriff, Merrill, Iowa, now living in Mount Hosen, Australia. Covered by the municipal band thing. I played in the municipal band for fifty years, and I want to thank you for having a nice band like that. I was back with Leo Kuchinsky, now back to the Banshee and everything, and so if I had a concern, I would just prompt or push you to keep these things going. Um, I know there's concerts that can be rock or wild or demonic or this and that, that can lead to immorality or drugs or whatever, so thank you. I, I'm not commenting on anything, and it is bad right now either. I'm just hoping it keeps on. A comment by what we had in La Mars over the weekend, we had four or five concerts, and, uh, programs out in the parks, which I think were very good. Restaurants ran out of food for the hundred and fifty years up there, this and that, I couldn't believe it. Barbecue place said we ran out of food, we're closed, they don't. Thank you, council. I was, this is the first city council meeting I've ever been at. I'm a born again Christian, I work in Michigan, I work in Israel.
Where are you living now?
Um, in Mount Hosen, Austria. It's one of Hitler's concentration camp towns. My wife is from there.
Okay.
So we have been in Christian work all our lives, and my wife is a Christian too, and I've been working, I've actually been in a council meeting in the government of Jerusalem with Prime Minister Netanyahu. So, thank you, Sioux City Council. I was born here, and would just add that concern, and I wonder, David Letterman's still not down in the lobby.
No.
See, I go back, I'm sixty, so I was born in fifty-one. And I hold in my hand these two wonderful brochures that I read through and look at, and I wasn't planning to say this or do this, but I'm thankful for Mike Pritchard and the municipal band, and maybe that all year long or something. Thank you for your good work, and I'm always ready for church concerts. I play trumpet, trumpet player with the band, so thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be sure and come back.
I'll come back. My dad's ninety-nine now. Jim Boganriff from Merrill.
Oh, sure, sure. Oh, my goodness.
Hi, good afternoon. Chad Jennifer Harzma, thirty-five, fifty-one Wanamaker Way, Sioux City, Iowa. Um, today I'd like to give a timeline of events from our water service line break at our house. Um, on Tuesday, March twelfth, two thousand nineteen, our kids took, took showers at seven AM, and the water pressure was fine. Around ten twenty-one, we found out there was no water to our house. Um, my wife Jennifer tried to use the sink. At ten thirty, Jennifer drove down the street, spoke to a city worker that was working in the, uh, in the area, and he said that he would look into that. Um, my wife Jennifer at ten thirty-five called city water department Roxanne and asked if there was any kind of water main turnoff or anything, any kind of issues. Uh, she said there wasn't. Um, at eleven twenty-eight, we were, Jennifer received a voicemail from Terry from the water, water department stating that we definitely didn't, don't have water in our house, but the neighbors on the right and left of us did. Um, four hours went by, and at three thirty, Kevin from the water department and Terry came into our house to inspect our utility room and, and to see if we had water in our home, and we didn't. Um, we asked them then to turn off the water, so, um, for any potential damages, and they said no. They couldn't do that, they didn't have the authority to do that. Um, at four thirty PM, another city worker, um, from the water department, um, seemed more experienced. We asked him also to turn the water off. He said he couldn't do that. At seven PM, John O'Brien, the utilities supervisor, showed up and assessed the situation. It only took him about five minutes, and says it was our responsibility, this was not a water main break, this was a service line break, and it was our problem, and we had to hire a contractor tonight or in the morning to get this fixed. Um, so obviously was pretty detrimental, but didn't know, you know, we never experienced this before. So, we were talking to the neighbors, um, they recommended calling Sioux City Engineering. And we hired them to come out and, uh, to fix the situation. We feel, uh, going through the process, we didn't know it was a service line issue. We did our part by reporting the issue to the city in a really timely fashion. And our, I guess our question here today was, it took about ten or eleven hours to, to, uh, for us, for the city to say that, um, it was our issue, and we were presented with a bill for twenty thousand five hundred dollars to fix this issue, when typically a cost of fixing the service line is usually twenty-five hundred to forty-five hundred dollars. And, like I said, it took nearly ten to, ten to twelve hours for them to, to say that to us. So we're just here today, um, we just feel like the city was maybe negligent on, on that situation. That was from Sioux City Engineering.
Did they determine what the, the problem was? Did they determine what your issue was?
Um, the, basically, the, from the water main, um, our service line broke, broke off from the water main. Um, that's basically, they just ended up fixing that, but, uh, that was one, that was basically the issue.
But the reason that the cost was so exorbitant or high was because of the timeline?
That's, that's basically what Sioux City Engineering said as well. They said, um, basically, we had a lot of, well, the water basically ran for additional ten to twelve hours. It washed out the street. I had replaced four sections of the street because of all the washout. Um, just costed, we were, you know, totally not expecting, um, we didn't have the insurance we do now, but, um, you know, usually the insurance would cover up to, I think it's between twenty-five hundred or forty-five hundred dollars. But just being a, being that it was, uh, the water was running for a long period of time and nothing was done about it, we, we asked city workers three different times to turn the water off, and they refused because they didn't want to, they would have to chlorinate, disrupt service to the other neighbors and would have to chlorinate the system. Um, it's just a long time, and it cost a lot more damage than we had to incur the, or incur that fee.
Why couldn't they turn your stop box off?
It was, uh, not a, they, they did turn the stop box off from our house, but it, in our particular development from our curb is our stop box, and then it goes underneath the street, the other side of the street.
So it was broke, it was broke some.
It's broke out on water line on the other side of the street.
I got you.
This occurred mid-March?
Uh, March twelfth, yes.
You're right, you can't turn the whole main off, I understand that. I don't know, we'll have to get a report. I don't have an answer for you today.
Okay.
But we'll try to figure it out, but, uh, I mean, I understand why they can't turn that. You, you don't necessarily turn the main off for a broken water line. I, I know that doesn't sound very good to you, but otherwise you, you know, if you choose not to fix that for two or three days, then your neighbors are out of water too, is part of the problem, so.
Yeah, absolutely. We just, like we were saying, um, John O'Brien, when he came at seven o'clock at night, he assessed it in five minutes and said, this is definitely not a water main issue. We'd have water everywhere, and, um, basically it just.
Okay, well, let's let John get us a report and see what.
I really appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else be heard in Citizen Concerns?
Very jits-a-long.
Do I need to say my name again?
Yeah.
Rachel Jacobson, thirty fifty-seven Stone Park Boulevard. Um, I was just curious about the research survey being done at the intersection behind Target with the new development of the Hobby Lobby building and the Fleet Farm there with that four-way stop, and there was potentially going to be a stoplight put in, and I'm curious about the, where we're at in that.
Yeah.
Uh, the consultant actually just delivered the draft to us, and I have not had a chance to look at it, just came in on Friday, so it, it, we should be getting it out here pretty soon.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect timing. Just got on Friday.
Uh, Rick Burtrand, fifteen oh one, Peavy Street. The, uh, to the Harzmas real quick, they did call the night that it broke. They were trying to get ahold of somebody and anybody, and somehow along the line, my name came, someone that was going to call. We ended up lining up Sioux City Engineering and everything. It's a bad deal. City should have probably jumped on this a little earlier, guys. Um, and if anything, I think maybe we should take a look at maybe the replacement. If I was the city, would maybe look at the replacement of some of the panels, um, to try to help them out there. It should have been. I, I think it's all about who showed up and when. I think that's the bigger thing. And when you're looking at people that have been in a home for a month, and, you know, they're thinking they got the new home of their dreams, everything's great, and all of a sudden, don't get me wrong, if they'd have paid the four ninety-nine, you know, that, on their service that we now offer, this would be a moot point. They didn't, they were new, new homeowners, but I think that, uh, my, as a citizen, I think it's, would be something to look at the panels. Anyway, actually, what I'm coming up here for is, as long as I took a shower and I'm ready to go today, guys, and I'm here, I want to talk a little bit about Floyd Boulevard, um, and Twenty-Eighth and Floyd, that intersection there. Um, I think that we probably should start to have a discussion about either a, a, uh, stoplight, or my preference would be is to close Twenty-Eighth and Floyd, um, which I know we've visited this several times, but I think just in the last few months, you can look at now, the traffic that's starting to go through that intersection. We've had a bus that's tried to gun it to go through that intersection, that had ran into the, to the laundromat. We have several, if, if you actually sit there, and I've been up, obviously, around that site a lot now, the increase in traffic that we're starting to see, not just from my development, which is some growing pains in that area, but the speed, um, and now with the increased truck traffic that you're seeing, that with the washout pits, um, that's happening down there in the old tractor assembly plant. Um, we've got a nice paved road that, on Ruston, now that we've spent the money, that takes us down to outer with the, with the Jensen Bridge. My, and we, you know, from a, from a, a railroad perspective, we can't put turning lanes in there because of the setbacks is too short. I mean, I'm beating a dead horse on that intersection, but you now you have one of, some of the major opponents that wanted to, did not want that road closed, which was, um, we all knew that was, in that area back there, is no longer there. I think it may be time to maybe start that discussion of maybe just shutting that intersection down. It really doesn't serve anything as a, as a back one.
Close Thirty First Street over on.
Hey, I'm with you, Bob. I think that, let's do it all at once, and I, I don't know why, as a council and as a community, that we don't just leverage this thing. It's time, and if we want to do the quiet zones all at once, I just think it's just time to leverage it.
This, this lady, as, well, I'm starting with the B and N, we've sent him a letter about closure on Thirty First Street. Unfortunately, there's two or three homeowners that'll be affected, but they're not really affected because Burlington Northern closed it off whether we like it or not.
It is, I agree.
There's always at least two trains sitting there, you can never get through, and so let's just do it right, close it up, and, and.
But I think there's a few things we want around here too, for the railroad. I think let's, let's do a little, let's do a little, let's do a little horse trading, and let's get that closed, but I think that we just keep kicking, until somebody's going to get killed in that intersection.
Right.
And there's going to be some blame, and I just think that we're all, we're. And I just think that we're all, we're all on notice now that that, there's, with, with the width of that intersection, it's, it's just time to shut her down and we're seeing more and more problems.
We're going to apply for a grant, but we're not, we got some issues, but with that Tiger Grant, one of the things we were going to apply for this year is extending hooven all the way up.
Which would be good.
All the way up Twenty-eighth Street, which would be great.
Yeah.
So, but yeah.
Well, we got a real nice piece of wide concrete on Ruston Street. It's a real thorough, that takes us all the way to Jensen now. So, any, any of the, the stuff with the bus traffic, buses shouldn't be going through that intersection anyway, as far as I'm concerned.
Either one of-
Pulling out onto Floyd, they should be taking it down to Jensen anyway. And, and I think with the washout pit, and you know how many semis are coming in there now and just dumping in and out. And then if you're coming from the north down Floyd, which you're getting now with the trains that are sitting there, what you're seeing now is that pileup, everybody's kind of crowding the curbs, and then we've got that in the center lane there. So, you know, I, I just think it might be time to revisit it and maybe use a little bit of our muscle of the city and that's it. I want to person that, but please, the good people here, the Harzmas. Thanks, guys.
Wouldn't be any relative of yours, would they? Wouldn't be any relative of yours, would they? Anyone else be heard? Seeing none, council? I want, I, I gave Bob, I mentioned three things last week that I thought needed to be looked at, but you missed out on it, but. I just wanted to say, and Alex did too, all three, I think, have been taken care of. They took care of the Whispering Creek, Morningside Avenue intersection. They couldn't see traffic to the south, but I think the owner jumped on it of the property and cut the trees down, mowed the grass, everything's good there. They went up, oh, they, if you look at the hill from Stone Park Boulevard in Grand View Park, went up, the complaint was a lot of potholes. I drove through there today, I think they fixed about fifty of them, so it's, it, it will be smoother, it won't be up and down. And then Kelly talked to me before the meeting today and he's going to take a look at the water tower up there at Thirty-eighth and Jennings and, and get the tree that was blown over. So, all three of them handled it really quick and efficiency, efficiently, and I just wanted to tell them thank you. And then one other real quick thing. Apparently, I canceled the Sulan Expo groundbreaking Wednesday and I didn't know I did that again too. I, I received an email Sunday afternoon from the mayor that said termination, Sulan Expo Center. And so, it had an attachment, I hit on the attachment, but it said it couldn't download.
Oh, pee.
So, then, no, 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 Wick-
Someone sent you a video to watch?
No, no, I, I failed on that last one, but I called Wick. Wick said they can't figure out what it is and it was all legitimate, they don't know how it got there and what happened. And then Dan got one this morning at four-twenty-six in the morning. I figured you were doing your city business. I was up doing business already. I have no idea what happened. Wick doesn't know what happened. I just wanted to apologize.
I took it off my calendar.
I'm going to, yeah. I'm going to stop using that calendar because every time I do, I cancel everything for the rest of you. I don't, I don't know what it is, but I'm still trying to find it, so.
Just don't cancel any parades.
No parades, yeah, okay. But I apologize, all the confusion. I don't know what that's all about.
I was worried about you, four o'clock in the morning. I didn't read it at four.
Oh, hey, some people think this is an in-and-out job, boy. You've got to study seven days a week if you want to keep up with this group, so. I'm done, thanks.
Rhonda?
I'm wore out, so I'm passing it off to Alex.
Um, I'm going to keep it short and sweet today. I know everyone will appreciate that. The only thing I would say is, I believe this is the first week, unless I miss, or Downtown Live, the concert series that happens in our downtown. It's actually on the lawn of the Public Museum.
It was last week.
Was it?
They had one Friday night.
Excellent. Well, hopefully, I'm able to make it this week since I was out of town. I think that's a wonderful thing that our community puts on. It's a really, really affordable concert that actually the proceeds, a lot of times, go to different nonprofits that volunteer, to whether it's Staff the Gate or Staff the Bar. So, it's definitely something to support and come out and listen to some live music on the lawn. The only other thing that I wanted to say was, I know we said it during the prayer earlier today, but, well, it seems like a long time ago now. But our community definitely lost an incredible advocate yesterday, Frank Lomier. You know, he, he's come to council numerous times to talk to us about different issues or bring him, bring attention to something. And I just, you won't meet someone, I think, like, I think about a lot of people that are activists or advocating for something and a lot of times, they do so, ruling with that iron fist or, you know, want to scream at you or spit in your face. And Frank was always pretty cordial. He was always willing to talk about solutions and, and what we could do and, and how we could work together. Even I think about his work with Representative Steve King, you know, even if you see disagreements in some areas, if there's opportunity to work together and try to make a difference in the world, I think Frank was the first one to try to do it. And so, we need more people like him in this world and, and he will be genuinely missed.
Yeah, I'd, let me add just real quickly that Frank and I are the same age and I've known Frank-
Was he that old?
We were in, unfortunately, we, I, I dealt with Frank almost through my entire career with the city previously and a tremendous activist for the Native American community. Nobody worked harder at it. I'm, cancer's just a horrible illness that, as much as we contribute and we should never stop, it's just not an easy thing to get over with. But I share your, your comments and I appreciate that. I think Frank was an interesting individual, had many good conversations with and always intended to do the right thing and worked very hard at it. So, the Native community, Native American community has lost a tremendous advocate and I hope that somebody will be there to step up and take his place. But God bless Frank and his family at this time and his daughter, unfortunately, passed away several years ago with cancer as well. And, and it's just been a tough go, but he was good for the city, made you think, made you be accountable, so, you know, may, may rest in peace.
As we find out more information about the service, we'll be sure and let you all know as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Frank was one to never give up.
Absolutely.
Never give up on his cause. And that's so many different ways. I want to thank Rhonda Capron for doing a great job at the Morningside Branch Library rededication and reopening. It's unbelievable what library director Rigdon has done and what the council and the mayor have done, what the team out there did. I mean, that library, if you haven't been to the Morningside Library, you got to go to it because it's just, it's incredibly good, it's user-friendly. And I think it was at that dedication, Rhonda, that I learned that that's one of many things that we have in Sioux City that gives back to the community by just being there.